You know. You're setting an expectation.
That's true.
Next. All.
One.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know.
Second donation.
I think I'm going to do that. I have, I have enough of all things. Steve, Amber, and Hank now.
Yeah, now they're there.
They're all in that stuff to get there.
More.
You can grab those. I got more.
If you can turn them. Yeah. And you're going to run that stuff. It's like. It's by the ground. We need to bring the rocket.
We're recording.
He's kidding.
Thank you. Where? Moving forward.
I didn't make, I didn't make more.
I'm done. Very.
No, I'm not even quite remember.
We will be sharing.
Thanks for listening. Yes, they might. You met it good. Everyone's there, right? So. Cause I don't know where. And I don't, I could do it because I wasn't here the last meeting. Alright, so call me in the order. First order of business consideration on the October eighth. Meeting minutes. Go with the guest. That's fine. Um, any, so having breakfast. Okay.
Yep, line twenty eight, just under the list of attendees. And Maureen Clark. I don't know if you didn't sign in or.
Is Jay born?
Oh, she'll listen, she'll listen to the recording. To get that, but.
I'll try my best to put Jay then. I mean, but.
Maureen Clark.
Maureen Clark.
And then on line one fourteen.
On fourteen.
It says there was no public comment. There were no about its present. Cross out that second sentence in right. A butter, Maureen Clark was present but did not speak.
That was on line. It's ready. Um, I want to put in there that OJ Robinson explained for the record.
Okay, yep.
It was you that did that. OJ explained for the record. Take that. That was all I had. Anyone else have any other corrections for?
I had something, I just. Let's go look at line fifty one.
Okay.
Five one. And it's a plan that typically submitted to the psych plan review. Details determined by the planning board what's on plan. I think we were talking about. And we were talking about both. Presidential single law plans and. Large subdivision plans in this conversation. And it's the subdivision plans. Us submitted to us the psych plan review. Individual house out of what. Psych plans are not submitted to the plan.
Crystal, I think we also, but I think we revived a lot of things we've been saying there is that. I think my question was that. Look. Stormwater amendment. Or next, it says the residential. Does amend it. Review under. Stormwater man. So I don't know how we change that. You're right, it doesn't look right.
Well, it's, it's, it says.
So also how about we put plans? Plan for subdivision are typically submitted to psych plan per review.
Okay.
Plans. For subdivision.
And then the next bullet point addresses what you said, historically individual law. And they said not to send to the board.
Right.
So, alright, so if we just do subdivision plans or plans, what if they pass for subdivision?
Plan for subdivision typically. Gets submitted to psych plan review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
That works.
I'll make the most of that amended.
All second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So your opinion, okay? Alright. I want to link a master plan update. Steve.
Right? Chris, Crystal, yep.
Alright, well, really like. Thanks for having me back. We're going to kind of jump back and forth through the agenda. So based on the agenda that we submitted to you, start with the review and update the review of the outreach and engagement plan.
Yeah, so as we discussed that last month's meeting, this will be something that'll be continuing to evolve throughout this process. We're gonna keep updating it. You won't see it every single meeting, but just because we're at the start in one nature, we're constantly wanting to check and see feedback. So I'm just going to go over some of the changes that we made as a result of last month's meeting, just at more of a higher level. Um, we added some specific social media pages. Um, like exit thirty two and when Facebook groups. Um, we included three demographic specific focus groups, including a business focus group, a senior focus group and.
Hang on a second.
Yes.
You started with.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, for the social media communication.
Yeah.
We added some specific on Facebook group. That were mentioned on last one meeting.
So that would be exit thirty two.
Exit thirty two and the land was.
Oh, that's okay.
And then under focus group, we included three specific.
Western White Mountains.
Yep.
Denver Commerce. Uh, seniors and little businesses too. For, right?
Yeah, we were kind of.
What the White Mountain are, are they the same as the Denver Commerce or are they? So that's all one.
Yeah, CNN has been helping us chat the businesses.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and Jen, on the second page, we separated out the surveys. So we did a townwide survey and then also completed a visitor. A separate visitor seasonal survey.
So you had a.
Visitor senior. Visitor season. Who didn't do it?
Who didn't see them?
Right. So I'm not.
Okay.
And then jumping back to the front of the page. Um, for the project webpage on the town's website, we are coordinating with town staff to get that up. We own supply some draft website content. So we are working with staff to get it, to get it going. Uh, we were hoping that we could send something to the. Western White Mountain Chamber of Commerce for their October twentieth meeting that they had, but we weren't ready with the website yet. So if town staffer, anyone needs help getting that done, I'm happy to assist. We do have a civic plus account that we work in other communities with, so we go right in and. Jumpstart the page, but. Maybe that's an update.
Have you had any discussion with? Carol or Jay or Corinne about? Focusing on this with the town staff?
Yes, yes, there has been communication with Jane and Corinne. So I gave the material to Jane.
She got the page up today. The page is on the website and it's good to go.
Awesome. There you go.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and so the website, which we now look at, it also includes the, a project email list driver list. And a project feedback form as another way for people to involve in the project and. Here where they have to stay. Do we have any other questions on it or any additions you think would be intense to the plan? Again, this will constantly evolve throughout the process.
I had something so like visitor senior surf or visitor slash seasonal survey. The dates are like in spring. Um, would it be our best interest to like divide some of that? So there's like, you know, really we have like winter people and then we have summer people.
Right.
So I don't know if that would be like a different breach or if you could somehow get the winter people. Later or whatever. That'd be my only concern.
I mean, it might be nice to have some. It does work with only mountains or.
Yeah.
It might be nice to have something from maybe some restaurants. You know, maybe if you have a survey brought off some of the larger restaurants that might be able to. The Bethbury Seal visitors. A lot, I think like. Blue and all of the dining places. You know, some people might like. Or restaurants.
Yeah. Amenities. We'll have, there'll be really no limitation where we can put it up because it'll be really a flyer for the QR code and the website. Uh, we will have some print ones that the locations like we talked about, but because it will be that kind of thing, restaurants are great. People waiting for a table, they're looking for something new, they see this stuff. They can call on their phone and do it.
The common man be a great place because they always have a waiting like that.
Yep.
There's a common man and across the street. Uh, school. A lot of places have the biggest place, what, anyone else? You can think of.
Yeah, we'll.
I'll laugh back.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll circle back to it. So part of the timing has to do with when we come back to you at the beginning of twenty twenty six with the existing conditions report. And we know what we've learned, but start to come up with questions we all want to ask. We'll start to be able to get ready and then we can talk about it if we want to justify one. Um, and ultimately we're not in a rush to get through the survey part. So if you think that there's a window that we can really try to hit. Um, and you want to delay one, we can do that. So sometimes we run into the same, it's not that often actually that we have the opportunity to kind of YouTube. Um, and when we do it, usually we run at the same time so that people, you know, broadly being advertised and people can decide if there are more of the resident one and more of the.
So. Phil, common question I would give is that. Even though we're going through. Um, visitors and residents. We really don't have that much of a, a. Commercial base except for burn, right?
In industry?
Industry. I mean, if there was, if there was some way to. Include that as a. I mean, most of those, I don't know, most people at Bernie's, they work in town, live in town, they work uptown. But half and half, I go.
We often will reach out to a big employer like that and ask if they circulate it. And so you might get some folks that even if they don't live in town and spending a lot of time here, may have thought so. They have that, I mean, it's young, I'm sorry, go ahead. Holy crap, we can mail.
Oh, yeah, we have very little industrial base.
Yep.
Workforce or. So it might be nice to reach out to the movement department.
Makes sense, yeah.
Um, are you doing any kind of incentive to fill these out? You know, beyond just like they should want to, so we hear their voices.
Yeah, the incentive part is hard. If we want to do an incentive to something, we can talk about it after, I think it should be for a photo contest. Jay and Crystal, but I had a whole idea to tell them. But um, we just were working with a town in Casco Maine and they did a photo contest before we got there. And it was a relatively small prize incentive. Like those they collected from their community are really outstanding. Um, and that's the type of thing that could engage from young people all the way up to seniors. Um, and it's a little easier because then we could maybe pick a bunch of different categories to give out a prize. And it's something we could do, it might be harder for the towns to have to get into like prize awards, but it's something we can do. But for survey results, it's hard. Okay, um, is this field given out and keep, I mean, my criticals are this will continue to be a draft. We can continue to add, extract from this a decent bit.
So were you? When you're looking at the. Republic participation opportunities. Um, and you had focus groups, are you? In. How are you doing that with the Westaway Mountains and the seniors? And I mean, have you sent people, have you talked to them? Anyone yet?
Well, wait till we do the exist, we have a draft of the existing condition report we're doing January. And then once you can see some of the data that we pulled together, we'll start talking to you about how far out we want to schedule those. And we can probably schedule them pretty quickly. But to do it now that far out, this seems really far.
So. Along with the focus groups. Where would? Town staff, town, town committees. Things like that, working out the, the ambulance or the fire department. Where would those? Where would those types of focuses to be able to see what they think, you know? Public works, I mean, the fire department, police, I mean, those guys must have. We should probably give them some input.
So that's starting now. So we've already had Corinne's help to reach out to department heads to let them know and Chris will think for that. Chris will start moving on.
Yeah, yeah, so that was going to be part of my existing conditions update for you guys. Um, we're underway with researching and I started reaching out to department heads and I have a schedule nineteen. We typically do like fifteen to thirty, thirty minute phone calls. And just ask them about their department, their needs. Um, how, you know, recent projects that they had, what they foresee for the next ten years for their department.
Oh, did you, you know, towns, do they still have staff meeting? Well, staff command, I was going to think like. That if anyone's staff meets, if they still does that. You know?
Um, they can, is that something we, would you want to meet with them all as a group or targeting individual? So you're talking about public works with this one and.
Right.
Fire department with this one.
Yeah, yeah, that's typically how we do it.
Yeah. I think, I think potentially later on in the project. Back to the existing conditions, then you see the existing conditions report and you see what we gleaned from all those interviews that the school do and any documents we're going to look at. If you think it's worth going back and attending a staff meeting, that's our problem. And the other way you can do it is after you get feedback from the public and we have benefit of existing conditions data and public feedback. It may start to bring some things to the surface and you might say this is a nice time for, for go too far to check in with department heads and that's common. So and because we're close, it's an easy thing to pull together.
Okay.
Yep. But we'll make it a little bit to. And so you also might be in a position where you heard one thing from the staff, of course, right now. And then you hear some topics that the public has brought forward, it made an issue that they never talked to about. You may want to go back and speak to that particular.
Sure.
You know, whether it's the fire department, the public works, whatever.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Any, any outreach to the public? How is that going to be?
Primarily the survey. Yeah.
Primarily the survey. I was. They did a. Forest service, wasn't it when they did something up, uh, was it Lost River they did? They came here in a room, they broke up into several different groups, they invited. People to come in, people to come in and that was, that was, that was pretty well attended, I thought. I mean, there were people that came in that wanted to talk about different things. They broke up into different groups, different little areas, you know, that, that people that were doing that. Didn't know if that might be more personalized rather than just filling you know.
I mean, that's how we often do it. The first meetings we had with you guys, it sounded like that was not successful and other master planning stuff, having people come into the room. So that's why we went towards focus groups. I mean, there's probably not budget to do focus groups and do a big public event, but we could do either.
Could we do? Could you do the focus groups and then at the end? If there's not enough information, can we leave a little time left to be able to do? Like a general public. Session to be able to kind of tell people what we've, what we've got from all these different focus groups and stuff like that and then. See if there's any other comments.
The thing with the general public session, so to make it really engaging, it sounds like the example you're talking about. Um, typically what we do is we, the room is set up so people can kind of walk around and spend time where they find things of most of interest. And so we have all the various topics you have from existing conditions and people can go to natural resources and recreation, community facilities. So maybe they are tired of talking about housing or the local economy. Uh, so people get to pick and choose. It takes a lot of time to prepare all those materials since they get so it's easy and interactive. So that's why typically we either do that kind of larger public event or we do the focus groups. Because a focus group will also take quite a bit of time to definitely line up the event, recruit the people, make sure people are going to show up. Um, and both are good, there are different ways to get a feedback. The in-person event, often we will mirror it with the survey. So the survey will actually not just be what you might have seen in the past, it's just kind of a somewhat boring word document. It'll actually have some data and maps that we pulled from the existing conditions report. So if you want to wait, you could wait until January, see what you get to the existing condition before we can come back to this and try to decide what the right mix is. You don't have to decide tonight.
So the, the, the focus groups, I agree with it and, but the surveys, you never know. The survey, you're not going to know if you just handed out a different restaurant or a balloon or something like that. You're not going to know whether they're from. Even though it says out of state or locally, may write local on it, you really don't even know. So you're not really, or you've got an in-person meeting, you kind of. You know, you kind of get more of a feel whether they really are. Residents or not, where they live, you know, but, but we'll get that as, just standing up, who's favorite residents, something like that. That does.
Um, what about, are you going to do?
So can you turn on your?
There you go.
I'm going to do.
Nope.
You can turn it on.
Like a stuffer in a trap bill, could you do that with a little flyer?
If that's something that you could do here in the house, you can create.
Yeah.
Can you print it and stuff that house?
I experienced one recently where it was stuffed in with the tax bill. And it was like just a pink paper, the paper too that kind of highlighted it. And they had a few like kind of. You know how we know the hot buttons with traffic and housing?
Yeah.
Few hot buttons and then somehow they had my email address. Few weeks later, he sent an email, we've only had twenty-three percent people return. Don't you care about? What, and then it had a couple more hot buttons.
Do you know who put that one together?
That's Center Harbor.
Interesting.
I don't know who.
Was it you?
That.
Didn't you guys do stuff with Center Harbor?
But that prompted me to, I'm like, alright, I'm going to do it. And it was simple five question, like. Quick and easy.
Yep. If you have the capability here, we can chart the period of. Uh, it's something we can create, it can be printed and stuff here, it's pretty easy.
And then I don't know, you know, like at my office. If I have an account that like, I don't know, has special accommodations or late payment or something. A pop-up comes up on the account when I open it up. So I say, but I'll super be the account and it'll say late payer or whatever. So I kind of know what I'm dealing with, when I'm talking to that client. So I don't know if there could be on the website that said. Survey, I don't know, just an idea.
We're definitely advertising on the website, whether we can have it in pop-ups. Yeah.
I wonder kind of like on the theme of that, if we could do like a gamification thing. Like within the area. So let's say the Woodstock station where like if we, you get a hundred percent of your employees to fill this out. You get bragging rights that you successfully did this. Or, or, and it could be like a tier thing like, oh, that business only have fifty percent or forty percent. And then we like roll it in because like. I really worry about people not having an incentive to do it. Like we can put it out in front of people, but why should they do it? You know, if they don't really see the effects, like clearly not a lot of people are really in to like town politics and everyone should be. Should all be in this realm, you know, so like if we could make it extra tasty for them somehow.
Could we, could we? Incentivize it through. Exist, the existing budgeting process or CIP process, so that. You know, it. That will give more attention to. Whoever puts the most in.
Kind of like when you have, you know, in the town, when the state, we have to have like the best restaurant, the best place to work.
Yeah.
Right, we get an email from our marketing person every day, don't forget to vote.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so, right.
Oh, I mean, you know, and, and maybe. I guess I'm just thinking about it, what if it's. If everybody thinks that recreation is really the way, way to go, then maybe they, you know, we put more, some more emphasis towards recreation. Or they think that the, the parking in the streets are terrible. Maybe that's, you know, so maybe we. Maybe we can say that we'll agree to. Put more resources towards it, I don't know, just, just a thought, maybe that's the way.
That's some of the businesses we get involved with.
Because they're. If you think about it, they're, they're, they're trying to tell you where they think we're, we're lacking. Most of them try to tell you where the lack of red and white, they think you're well, if they think you're lacking in it. And there's a lot of comments about that, maybe the town could agree to. Put more resources towards that, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's a hard thing to be able to articulate carefully ahead of time. That feedback and concern, so you don't end up jammed up somehow. But the issue that came up was not anything with any of us in this room, thought it would be, here you are committing funds to it.
Yeah, and it was hard to. Quantify that because. My earlier comment about whether you live here or not, someone's going to say, oh, yeah, all the people live out there, walk kind of roads and streets. We can't even do this when we live here, because there's not enough of us that live here, so I suppose it's still that way though.
Yep. I mean.
I could see that.
Outreach and engagement is always one of the places in these projects where there are more ideas than there is time in money. And so anywhere we can leverage good ideas, you all, you all will help jump in and help. Or there's capacity with the staff or other partners, we can, you know, continue to kind of add on to stuff. Some combination of this is what we can do within the existing budget. We can drop focus groups. And you could also meet with people with those three groups and we could do a bigger public event. So like, let's just keep, I would say, keep thinking about it and be able to keep talking about it as a board. You don't really have to decide until the beginning of twenty twenty six.
Yeah, I mean. One of the questions I have is. And my own mindset, you know, Linkin doesn't seem to be, have our problems attracting visitors, attracting people to town. We don't.
Right.
People, I mean, it doesn't matter what time of year, so let's go leave on a tree and, and then be played. That's crazy still. But. It's how you handle that and how much more. Growth you want with it that. I think it's where the master plan should go, I mean. It's whether it's. Formal housing or whether it's parking or whether it's whatever it is, it's like, I mean. Yeah, more hotels, or yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's truly, it's, we don't have a problem attracting.
Right, just now you're.
How we're, how we're handling all of that. Infrastructure wise, social, economic wise, personality wise, I mean, you know, all of those things to me are where. Where, where stuff, because there's people that, so that's what divides us, I think.
Right, we are. That is the focus at all.
I mean, that's what divides us is get the locals to say, oh, yeah, we can't get out on the street, we can't go to a restaurant or can't go to the grocery store. And everyone else, that's such a great place to be. Okay, and so they come up with, but. I mean, you know, we've got to find a common denominator somewhere on how to deal with that. But.
Well, so a big problem with Lincoln is, but always a good idea, people have a land to do a lot of the stuff.
Right.
About three miles wide, three and a half miles long. And there's only one eighth and one, one eighth, one percent left built in the Lincoln. That we completed build on. And half of that is not available. It was stuck.
Yeah.
If two roads coming in. Keg. Bruce Ray, what's that, like to that part of it, most of not. But. There's not much place for any kind of infrastructure in there, we need to sustain the growth that we, that we experience.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask. Can you talk to us about how the focus groups are going to work? Um, because if we're looking at doing those or a public participation. I, I mean, my vision would be that like if you're giving us, let's say the. Um, because if we're looking at doing those or a public participation, I, I mean, my vision would be that, like, if you're giving us, let's say, the Chamber of Commerce. That, you know, you work with them to set up basically a, a public input session, but more focused towards people involved in business. And, and you set a date and go and it's, and it's basically a public input. With them supplying a certain segment of the public to you, is that? Yeah, we would kind of, them to give us the contact information and then Crystal and I would reach out to everybody and confirm their attendance. But you're right, we ended up in that direction because we had heard that an in-person probably wasn't gonna work. Some of the surveying worked really well last time for you and having different locations. Now we have electronic surveys as well that are really pretty slick. Um, so we talked about doing that to get a broad brush and then talking with three different populations to get a much more focused conversation. Around business, senior needs, youth needs, what we can change.
I like the focus groups, I think you then have someone behind over, partnering with you.
Yeah.
To drive people to the event, as opposed if we do it like here. I mean, yeah, we'll get the word out, but, I don't know. I think you, when you belong to the chamber or when you go to the senior center, they're gonna be more excited about. Coming to their event versus them coming over to the town event.
Just think you might get better turnout.
Sure. I think people are more familiar to, like, with going to the community center, like seniors.
Right.
Seniors are really familiar going there, they're comfortable, they love it there, they're supported there. So I think you would get better turnout if we went there.
Same with going over there.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
But we could do that through the school as well, sort of.
Right, right.
Yeah, in the chamber.
I mean, the school would be, that might be a good place to do some, something for.
Yeah.
Local, so you, I mean, you don't have many out of town visitors going to the school or participating in anything like that, so. Those types, e- even surveys down there sent out was, you know, down, handed up to all the schools down there to bring home to their parents, to get to Lincoln, we're doing that.
Yeah, that would be the thing with the focus groups, you can use that as a entry to also get the, get the survey out. Um, so it does have, you're building partnerships.
And, and those two ones simultaneously, the focus groups and the survey?
We can do them at the same time, sometimes getting front-loaded with the focus groups and follow the surveys, so we have a chance to tell everybody about it and then you can do the surveys out quickly. Um, so there's a chat to do it as soon as, like, any other kind of mailings or other stuff that we do.
And you're looking at focus groups in March?
By March would be good.
Yeah, I see, I, I see the project promotion and town events as October, November and December. Focus groups as March.
Yep. That way you have January to get through the existing conditions, you can do edits, we can start lining up dates for focus groups, putting materials together, advertising, getting people, that's what we did about it.
What, you ever thought of doing a, they have a place to go there, but then there are people who can go and feel comfortable with. They have Jean's Playhouse down here. Which is a nonprofit, and lots, lots of people, lots of people in town go to it. You might be able to do and work something out with them, you might pull right up in a, from the courier, in a little, in a, from a, little courier, some bracket. When they have an event, if Jean's Playhouse is one of those, they're trying to cook eat and do to whatever.
Yeah, miss.
Like a margarita, so.
Margaritas, yeah?
Why people bring more people in, to preserve all the heart and.
You know what I'm trying to say? People know the place, both locals and head out of there. And not home, I mean, spending a part-time, it's.
Yeah.
You might be able to, if you work something out in a town in Jean's Playhouse. Get a bunch of people contribute, make a bunch of cookies and all this kind of stuff, it's like, nothing fancy, just so you go in and talk about it. Same time you can promote Jean's Playhouse, which is a plus. Lots of people still don't even know, say, if you, if you come into town, just put on a sign on the street, I'm gonna. You might also want to do some stuff on Facebook in the local section.
Yeah, we have that now.
Okay, but I thought of a Jean's Playhouse, I'd give it to people to get it, or be more comfortable, more joyful and just try to go to a place and go and sit down, you could hear.
Right.
You have a couple of teams, you know, probably a hundred people in plus, so come on it. And my people, it would be more like, maybe make an evening or an afternoon, that job, but. And would give more publicity, they might want to have more publicity, people team to play, but give people an intent to go to it. Be more comfortable and more.
If, if you decide to do an in-person event instead of a focus group event, we want a big open space, like a big room. And so you want people to be able to move around freely, talk to each other, you know. I could grab budget and bring them over and show them the map and be like, is this really how this is or why is this like this? Um, so you want a lot of interaction. People get those meetings and they're unlike a lot of municipal meetings they maybe have been to or think of. Uh, and they leave pretty happy, because they get to see their friends and neighbors, they get to have their opinion shared in whatever format they like. They get to write stuff down, put it on a map, grab one of us, tell us, write it down, whatever, you know, so that, that can be very engaging, but. It is a matter of getting them to that event wherever they. Um.
Wait, I mean, I think you'll tell through your focus group, you, you're starting focus group, whether. Where, where you're going, whether it's got to be attended, whether people have so many interests, and if, if there's a lot of interest. Or maybe you come back and say, you know what, we've been seeing a lot of interest in all these other groups. They can be recommended having, you know, something a little more along that line, right?
Yeah, I think in our proposal, you brought pictures of how we do it, so the materials are really nice, so it does take a lot of time to do it. So we probably should talk about this again in January and just really try to decide if we want to go all in on focus groups and do a small in-person or.
So we can, I know that somewhere, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
January, we found out, good luck.
Yeah.
You know, I have, one other question, for print media, are you looking to do um, press releases or is this like paid advertising?
More, more like the newspaper.
Yeah.
It's like that.
More like what?
More like the newspaper, as Joe was saying.
Yeah, just like written articles about the project.
Right.
Okay, so more like a, a free press release as opposed to a print ad?
Correct, right, yeah.
Okay, um, cause I'm not sure White Mountain Shopper is gonna be the best thing to go with, um, as opposed to. An article in the um, Courier.
Yeah.
Or even the Plymouth Record.
Sure, we can change that, yeah.
I don't think so.
I don't see that to be a nice medium.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's even.
Oh, I mean, beyond that website.
Yeah, definitely.
But yeah, whichever print would be the Courier and the, and the Record.
Okay, yeah, we'll change that. Does that bring us through the first agenda item to the second one?
Yeah.
Um, uh, good, um.
Hopefully, though.
Close your time limit for the product. Like ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
I'm up, I'm in there. I'm really dying to call up. Um. So we have four possible logos here, and I want to give you some background. So we had a really good conversation last time, we had a lot of ideas about what to go into the logo for branding this. Um, and then we got back and we had to talk to the gra- our graphic designer and like get it does reality. So one of the challenges is, this is a really small part of the project. And this is gonna be not the focus of a lot of the outreach materials, it's just a way for people to recognize continuity, right? So if they see something in the record enterprise, or they see it at a restaurant, and they're ready to go focus group, they're like, oh, this is all the things that. So we tried to play, one of the things we were most challenged by that we could not pull off was kind of like old Lincoln, new Lincoln. And it was a little bit of us challenging each other, like, is everyone gonna agree with what is old Lincoln? And will be, be a simple enough image that people will know what it is and not be offended or annoyed. Um, it was really hard to do, so we kind of scrapped that. And then we kind of let the designer go a little wild with a couple of the, the top two and the bottom one. Um, and then a couple of the recreational ones just felt a little too much like a loon to add, like, and they're actually like a gondola or things like that. Which we shied away from, whereas this could be someone that came, you know, could be anywhere, someone on skis. Um, but do any of these stand out as things you like? Did it give you any ideas? Just curious to see. Karina was nice about to print these for us.
The first question I have is, I thought when we did the Liverpool Lincoln, I had written down Liverpool Lincoln twenty-four. Did we put a year on there? Cause of, or, or is this supposed to be like, what's the next, we do this every ten years, right? So we're gonna be twenty twenty-six? Right, I mean, twenty. I just want.
Twenty thirty-six?
Twenty thirty-six.
So we, the year Wes talked about, this is the final version we both worked out when we were here, that you all agreed to, we can check the minutes.
Without, without the year.
Without the year.
Without the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you can always add the year somehow, I mean, on some of them if you want, but. Do any of these stand out as they could be workable?
I like the top one.
Do you?
Like, quite far.
Any, just, just a gut feeling?
I can tell you, I don't, don't like, the second one is just, it's too plain and simple.
Yeah.
Like the catchy eye.
Sure.
And, and the skier one, yes, it associates it with loom, but it also associates it with, with a really smaller segment of. Of Lincoln.
Right.
Okay, um, you know, we have, we have hikers, we have, yeah, we just have, you know, the whole summer season in this. It, it, to me, doesn't.
Too narrow.
I like the top one.
How, how does she feel?
I like the top one too, but I kind of feel like it looks like the top with Plymouth State University, like their web page.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I don't know if we could like make the mountains a little more defined.
Sure.
And maybe it's a color scheme, right? Cause Plymouth is, is green and white blue, and it's like, and I think even their font.
Maybe it's the fact that it's squared off this way too?
It's pretty, yeah. But I like, I like the mountain range, I like that there's multiple colors.
We can look at that and see if this might have changed with the user, doesn't make that.
Yeah, I mean, but we're not Plymouth, so I don't think anyone's gonna be like, oh, it's just like Plymouth State logo.
I'd also agree with the top one, on what you have here.
Yeah.
That's one.
Here's, and there, I like the top one too, and there's an app that you can have the mountain range like mimic exactly what's here. Oh, really? When you're, and you're hiking, you know, you could.
Oh, I've seen that, yeah.
You could actually make it like very specific to the area.
For which vantage point would you suggest?
Yeah, that's, that's a trick.
Right.
I don't know, maybe.
Not by yet, then.
Yeah.
All right, we can look at that.
I don't know.
I'm doing like.
It kind of looks like.
Do you, do you know what app that is? Yeah, I need it.
It's hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple times I would stuff it in the hand. So the bottom three, not as much, so everybody seems to be gravitating to pick that one. Okay, what would be nice to do is we can see if we can make some minor modifications, but this is the type of thing that we want to get up on the website. So to start to show recognition of the project. And then as we start rolling things out this winter, we use it to show continuity for the project, it's just kind of putting a stamp on it.
So, uh, you want to get this done and agreed upon, you don't want to wait, our next meeting is January, correct?
Correct.
You don't want to wait till that?
No, so we can make some changes, we can send it back to you guys, like you sent it through Paul and Karina, she. So you can look at it when you're reading, you just say, hey, we like this one, go back to the original.
When you do that, give her a response deadline.
Sure.
So, so that we're not into January and. Just to move it along, like, you know.
We can do that.
Here it is, if there's a problem with it, let me know by, you know, such and such a date.
Okay.
Then, when you're reading, girl, did you ever notice that sign when you go into Gorham? You clean the monkey hole, it gets smooth.
Get by Walmart.
Yeah, and it has all the seasonal, boom. They, they're made from somewhere, I don't know, I guess you can find the little signs that give all the seasonal attractions, like, that the guy grew up, he has ski and snow will be.
Yeah, like the tourism signs.
Yeah, it's pretty neat, it says, you know, it says a lot.
Yes.
Four or five little signs there.
Yep. That might be something too, we could even play around with in the formatting of the document.
Those are broken things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not like, yeah.
Right.
Maybe that's cool.
Now, that I thought would take longer.
Well, everyone after with a proposal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Yeah. All right, so what does that bring us next, people? Back to me, um, so, yeah, we just wanted to mention, we won't mention it again after tonight, but we wanted to mention the. Two thousand sixteen goals and actions again, um, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at it since last time and has feedback.
Where? I was looking in two thousand sixteen one, for the page or the chapter or whatever, where it said goals and. Goals and actions.
Yeah.
I didn't see it anywhere.
Wasn't that, that, that exact language, you talk about the implementation plans with the Excel spreadsheet?
So that would be the action, yes, um, the goal.
Something were divided in between the chapters, so each chapter topic of the twenty sixteen master plan started with this golden strategy. Each, so it kind of was like, I printed each page out, but I had to like extract it for myself to only printing. Yeah, that's exactly. Have, yeah.
So you're saying that, probably every chat, go ahead. Gold and.
Right, it's like more of a page.
Well, now I heard. Start with the vision, and then this golden strategy.
Yeah, I just happened to run to housing and neighborhood, I don't think gold, right? Maybe the first page, gold, right? I was a little confused trying to find what it is, what was you were looking at.
I mean, the biggest thing we're looking for, whatever they're called, is what did the twenty sixteen plan set as goal or objectives? That you think should be carried forward?
Okay.
Um, and where their actions or implementation pieces that, um. Were accomplished that you think should still be addressed, like that never happened, I was gonna say, yeah. Um, knowing that early on is helpful, because those are things we can flag consideration later. Um, so it's the first one, page twenty-two.
Page.
Which that, okay, so I'm looking at the whole energy strategies, or when it's kind of.
So bring me a link to that.
I think you gotta push it even here, Paul, I can, I have a couple of comments on that. That I went through the.
Yeah.
Um, for where I felt that we've met the mark is like improving the sidewalk, bike trails, walkability of the downtown area. It just seems like, you know, with the crosswalk, the, even with the traffic, when I was saying that, I maybe don't like.
I'd love to send it.
But it seemed like there was a lot of the goals, there were a lot of things that people seemed concerned about. That, um, we haven't met, um, one, and I just see the, um, of what people say when I see on social media with the aesthetic. Kind of zoning and trying to keep that, I don't know what people really want for a look of the downtown village center, but. There seemed to be a feeling that they wanted that in the two thousand sixteen. Housing was discussed, public transportation was discussed, traffic was complained about then, it's only gotten worse. Concerns over water and sewer, which I know we are addressing now, which is amazing, um. And the other thing that was brought up was, and recommended was finding ways to attract diverse. Um. Industry, diverse jobs that would be better paying than working just in a restaurant or tourist. So that we could attract the younger families, because it's. You know, when you're younger, working in a bar, working in a restaurant, that, that to me, that's a great job with the mountain, but it doesn't pay for kids. It doesn't pay for a house, so that's what I see as the problem.
Okay.
Um, but I think we've done a really good job on, you know, with trying to maintain public access to the river, which seemed to be the threat that just.
You think we've done a good job of that?
Well, at least trying to have lady bathtub, and trying to have the swimming pool, and you're trying to have the, the trail, you're, you're trying.
We're trying, but we, see, I couldn't disagree with you a hundred percent on that, because where I come from, living here for a long time, yet the access to the rivers. Are, have been greatly diminished.
I agree.
I mean, we just.
But people owning private property, like I see it in my association, I'm a little upset that they feel they can put a gate and not allow people to walk down to the river.
Well, same with Little Mountain, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I know, but.
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 We lost those.
The county's pride, is what I'm saying, and.
Go ahead, I've heard of them.
I agree, but that, that was one thing that was a, a very important thread in, in what I've read from the two thousand sixteen. And that they don't want gated communities that aren't allowing public access and. I'm feeling like there's, that's gonna be a little bit of an issue between South Peak and the rest.
Well, and there is, if, if South Peak continues to, to go on with what they're proposing, it's like a whole other village over there, right? And that, you know, to me, that, that's not what we should be about, it should be about one town.
Community.
One town.
Well, yeah, but not, it could be.
I think it could be Aspen, Brevail, or.
But I, I think that, um. But I, I think that, um. They'll find, I, they in South Peak that they're going to benefit by having the public, so you should be trying to. Get the public over there to support their restaurants and their shopping and the things that they want.
Well, the reason is not a lot of. I mean, when you go to Conway. You see shops, it's not just restaurants, there's shops. But in Lincoln, I think the reason we don't have a lot of those, silent thoughts only, but it's because we don't have the population sustainability year round. Now, we have, we still have the big influx of. You know, uh, summer, you know, and we had the big influx of winter, but even at that, a lot of it, we're, we're destination town. People come for two hours, do their thing and go home. They don't hang around and shop and, and we should bring up more shops and stuff like that, so. We truly, you know, in my eyes, I, I look at Lincoln like we're, we're a part-time destination town, cause people. Come up, I mean, you, you won't just won't look at the interstate. You see the interstate at. A busy summer or a busy winter weekend, they're coming up in the morning and that's a line going back at night and then that, it's like the. There's a switch that turns off for Lincoln, you know, for the rest of those days or the hours when they don't come up, see nothing, there's nothing here. People don't stay for that, no, and that's where I think we lose some of that. If you had the industrial, if you had the mix.
Yeah.
You would have some of that year round, but you can't have that without having housing, to be here either, and that's where. You know, the town's trying to hold some of that.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's just what it talked about, it's like trying to, I don't know how cities attract new industry. Like higher paying. Well.
They market themselves and they hire folks to go recruit.
And they may get like a tax incentive, maybe.
Sometimes if you add, yeah, you do, there's a tax incentive or there's infrastructure incentive, like they'll. Use some infrastructure build, there's some partnering, but we can talk about that as different strategies that can go into this plan.
That's how, that's how Bernie's can do it, was it, it'll tax it.
And the other, and for the school, for the younger kids to talk about.
Yeah, the game is.
Educate. Yeah, there's a, when I look around at this town, I think, I wish I was in my thirties and. Wanted to start another business.
Right.
Because there's a lot of opportunity here, but you know, I see, it's nice when school give kids those, um. You know, my son went to, um. Community college and he's now a mechanic and they did three months of school, three months of training, like. You know, these kids wanna become contractors, maybe on their own business or. Cleaning these houses or rentals or property management. You know, finding good property managers, but they need the ability to be trained.
In those training programs, don't.
I don't, I don't know, but it's.
Back in the day, the. Little high school used to have, what was called the hotel motel. As they realized that. What we get was hotels, motels that served, serviced all these tourists that came up here.
Right.
And they, they taught cooking and they taught. All sorts of different stuff that, that applied to, you know, the seasonal resorts that were up here. But none of that really stayed around quite long.
Um, I didn't have time to review the twenty sixteen master plan, but I think there was something on it about the recreation plot back there. So like that hasn't been updated yet, so that could be a hot button.
Don't remember.
So I forget what year, but the town was gifted X amount of acreage by the river. And it's supposed, and it was like, when we got it, the town voted that it was gonna be for recreation.
The river front.
Yeah, the riverfront park, and like part of it was supposed to be a boat launch. And snow, parking, maybe a kayak, bike park.
Yeah.
Have paved paths that were lit for walking at night, um.
Probably in there.
Yeah, with the pavilion, and that hasn't been developed yet.
Sorry that I, oh, Jay, you probably responded to that.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a plan for that property, it's, I think it's seventeen-ish acres.
Yes.
Um. We got a. I think it's a one million dollar matching grant, so we come up with five hundred, they come up with five hundred, anyway, we've got a grant for that. Um, but then, and the whole thing kinda came to a standstill when, um. We knew about one area with some, uh, buried waste from burnedy that had been fully mitigated and.
Yeah.
The well. Closer to the river, there was some mill waste that. I can't say we were surprised, but we didn't know about, we didn't know the location, we didn't know the extent. And when that was discovered, it kinda stopped the project. And we had to do a lot of, of. You know, testing and researching and all of that, the point where it's at now is we, if we, um. Got funds to do all of the testing through, I, I believe EPA was, was. The majority of the funds, some DES money, but. Anyway, we've done the testing, we've come up with a mitigation plan for the materials that are buried. And we applied for the ground fields, um, grant. And we didn't get through the round that we wanted to, but we're gonna be in the next round, which. Is, I remember it's spring.
Okay.
Of twenty six or fall twenty six, but it's, it's next year.
Okay.
Great.
And if we get those funds, basically, they, uh, they EPA. Does the bulk of the, uh, project of cleaning up the, uh, hazardous waste.
Is that planned for the recreational, for the riverfront park, is that one of the plans that you perceived?
I've seen the riverfront park on the town's website, um, I haven't started tweeting into it yet.
Hey, we'll look for it.
There is a, uh, conceptual plan out there.
Okay.
Um, and there's already been some changes to the conceptual plan. Because of the waste to move in, move out here, that we're gonna move back and, you know, kind of working around. What, what's there, what we wanna disturb, uh, all protections they want to, well, we're gonna be required to disturb to.
Right.
Dig out of it and what areas we might not want to disturb. So we're gonna work around with all of that stuff, but there's a conceptual plan.
Okay.
There.
Brilliant.
Multi, multi-phased, so not gonna happen at once.
No, but it sounds like a great problem.
Oh, yeah, so if you could include it and you just make it happen. Okay, offer a deal.
Yeah.
You hired the right guy.
Okay, we, we done a project, Mill City Park in Franklin, which you may have seen in the movies, the first whitewater park. We're building, we're actually in the river now, we, we're not actually doing, still in the building, but, um. I'm on the board and we're building the next two whitewater features for another two and a half million dollars. Um, and it's been interesting, so the community's connecting with the river in that location in a way that they haven't in a long time. Um, it does attract people, which you don't really need, um, so keep that in mind. Um, other thoughts on the twenty sixteen, you're not, you're not damaged from talking about it in the future, but we won't make it, I need your focus, go forward.
There, there was some things that, that. I would wanna talk about whether we include them or not on, on the upcoming one, I mean, do you wanna go through those now, or is that better when we go chapter by chapter?
Yeah, chapter by chapter is fine, and you see existing conditions, if you wanna say, wow, I really wish you weren't so talking about this, or I wanna bring this forward and you guys have a nice. That's fine, we can go further and kind of end it that way. That works. Or if you have notes, you wanna send them along, um.
I think I can do that, I, I've got a bunch of notes that I would probably send along.
Yeah, so if you want to do the same, okay, and send them along.
I think that'd be better, because I mean, if we start going through this, I have. Like twenty different things like, that I either put a question mark next to or suggestions, that's, I mean, if we get off on a twelve minute tangent on each one of these, we'll. We hit midnight.
That's true.
So, yeah, while, while we say that, that, that will send, anyone that wants to make comments can send, does everyone have Stephen's email?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll send our comments to you, and then you can group them, some are gonna be the same, maybe some won't, and then just. Come up with that list and say, wow.
About two weeks from now. Does that seem doable within the next two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I assume you have a copy of this?
We do.
So when I send a note, I say on page ten. Okay.
Yeah.
Just, just to make it. Search for what I was talking about, no.
We appreciate that. But that's a big time, uh. You straight on. Okay, um, what's next? So two weeks, two weeks. Guess we already talked about that, so the, the last thing we have for you guys is just the meeting schedule, so. The way that the meetings fall in November, we're still pretty busy researching, writing, formatting, um, in December, it falls pretty close to the holidays. And we won't have a draft ready to share with you yet, so we had talked to Paul about this hat coming back in November, I put two dates in there, I think, as I mentioned to you, I'm open to. But, um, we could come to either of those dates, or we could have a meeting at another time if you want, whatever you decide you wanna do.
We, we start. Town starts budget season on what, November, pretty much, and it goes through.
First week of February.
First week of February is public hearing, so, um, I would think maybe moving it. From January to February might be better, because it's, there's a lot of. Other meetings that everyone's trying to get information to and things like that.
Okay.
Um, cause that. You wanna be focused on that? Yeah, I mean, if we could focus it sometime along here, because even just the town staff, but they have to prepare for budgets.
The only, I don't mind doing the existing conditions in February, it gives us a lot more time. Crystal's gonna be a happy dance, um, but, uh. It's gonna push your outreach out, just so you know, so you're gonna end up in this kind of like late winter, spring. Which is fine, you might not get as many visitors participating, then maybe that's totally fine. Um, but just think about that, so we'll probably be like March, April, so February, March, doing either focus groups or meeting. Which could work to our advantage, could be fine.
Well.
Can I throw a suggestion?
Yeah.
See, there, there is a pause before that, um. February public budget here. Because we have, right, there, the budget has to be done.
Yeah.
Ten days?
Ten days.
I'm just wondering if, if, if January twenty eighth would fall in that range where the budget's gotta be done.
That's, I, I'm, I'm just trying to say it's appropriate, cause I know everyone's always screaming, trying to get it all ready.
Yeah, that's how I was, you're right, I agree.
I mean, and to throw another thing on, it just makes it.
I'm just wondering if January twenty eighth is late enough beyond this, we're not pushing it out. Too much further.
Do you want us to check?
But I'm checking, yeah, cause I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the date, I don't carry it in my head, I still, it's beginning of February.
The outreach and, and the surveys and stuff can all be going on. And our meetings. With you, after you take all that information and, uh, sort it out for us can be a, a after that. So, yeah, right, can't you still be doing focus outreach?
No, cause what we wanna do is, we wanna use the existing condition, the existing conditions is basically like our baseline understanding of all the topics. Lakeview transportation, everything, like what do we know as of twenty twenty six? Um, and then what questions do we have with the public, so we need to go to shares and facts and figures to get them thinking about Lincoln today, thinking about it tomorrow. And I want to make sure that all of you feel good about the material, we can put it to the website, so those that wanna do a deep dive scan.
Won't you be getting most of the. Questions that we have in the next two weeks, cause we're all gonna look twenty sixteen and say. Here's our questions, I mean, you're gonna be able to focus those and.
That's part of it, the rest of it is all the other documents we talked about the last two meetings, and Crystal and Zach have been reading through and kind of pulling in and summarizing. To like shorter.
We still have to get a lot of, you still have to get a lot of updated. Um, information from.
That's what we're doing between now and then, yeah, so the idea is that in January, we kind of have all the background information in one place. Um, we've known what you'd wanna make sure is in there or not, and then we could start saying, what do we do with this? And we, what do we do with this is when we go up to the public in whatever format and say, here's what we know, what would you like to see happen, or how do you feel about this? To give you some guidance, so that then you can say, okay, but this is, these are the directions to plan, to put in, these are the things that should be priority.
Okay, I think we. I really think we should move it on into February, cause I, I think that it could get a little more, and it's not so rushed.
Yeah.
And we can, eh, you know, some of what you're gonna be looking for is coming from the staff, and the staff's gonna be busy, and so.
Okay, so we'll look at February, uh, February dates, you look at the first meeting or the second meeting in February?
Are you gonna look at one meeting, or you look like, you, you bullet points, you have like two meetings, one for the re- report, um. On existing conditions, and then one for the rolling out of focus groups.
I still think two.
Okay, we can do two. We'll do the same.
Eleventh and twenty fifth, there are two scheduled meetings we have.
Thank you for that. Yes. What we'll do then is we'll make sure that you proceed the draft in January, and you have a chance back there yet, before the meeting on the eleven.
Uh, we'll, we'll do it on February eleventh and February twenty fifth.
Yep.
And, you know, that would be a good timing, because when we're done on the twenty fifth. We will have an agreement on what you're gonna be doing for surveys and focus groups.
Yes.
We have, we have the town meeting on, on March tenth, so. Two weeks after that day, we have town meeting, it would be the perfect time to really get the word out.
Word out.
People who are more invested in, in what happens.
Yeah, that, yeah, that.
So we start advertising what's coming up and where they can find on the website and all that.
Yeah.
Right.
And that, okay, that would segue into that pretty nicely.
Okay.
Either that's really wants to. Okay, this is great. That's all we have for you tonight.
That's it?
It was plenty, but I know you have other stuff, people wanna get to that too. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for coming. You're welcome, so, yeah, we'll be, we'll be checking up in a couple weeks if we haven't heard from you.
And, and look, if you're, if you're not getting questions from us.
Yeah.
Uh, don't wait for two weeks to ask us, if you haven't done anything after a week, can you send me?
Sure.
That I'll push buttons and see if we can remind people.
Yeah.
Everybody gets busy, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Have a good night, you.
Alright. Hey. Well, it's gonna go to the water system, it doesn't suck, but I, I asked Jason. Down tonight. Um, because I was on Facebook and saw that. He was having some issues with, um, his, what did you, business studies have him?
Say that one more time.
Then you were having, can you come up there?
Yeah.
Jason. So they, they currently has a, a wood. Firewood production.
Firewood, yeah.
Firewood business. And there was, uh, someone who called in to complain about it, I guess, didn't leave their name, apparently, or didn't get it written down. But Jason's been doing wood, firewood for a long time, and, um. I, I look back in the, the regulations and I, if you. If you look at, if you look at what he's doing, it's, it's allowed in our, it's allowed in our regulation by. By ordinance. So. If you look into the home business, it says that sale of firewood and manure enhances in tourist, tourism, looks and feels of the town. It's allowed accessory use residential and vertical entities and all going districts. I remember when we put that in there, that we, we said we didn't wanna restrict people from being able to. Cut, sell wood. Um, so I'm, I'm just ask Jason down to. Give him, you know, kind of like in a, uh. I don't think you guys could, uh, conceptual. Kind of part of a conceptual review, kinda like talk was a tell, put these two in there and, uh. Make sure that no board members have any problems with it. So just tell something about what, what you're doing, move the mic over, talk into it, so get it.
Same. Uh, so pretty much I bought, I buy long length supply, we've got off the track, trailer, eight more room, I cut it, split it. I wrapped the bundles and I bring, I have four retail locations and I have two rope type of boxes.
You've been doing this?
I've been doing this for twenty years.
With no more.
Yeah, and then before that, I heated my house with a wood boiler, so I did a bunch of wood prior to that in the same location.
What, what location?
Say it one more time.
What location?
It's, well, it started out where I am now at Seven Good Road. And then I moved it, when I started getting track trail loads, I, I moved it behind the house to Six Good Road, and now it's back in Seven Good.
You know where the Y is?
Is that where your parents' house is?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I bought, I bought that.
So, I just wanted to. Kinda like poll the board and make sure that no one had any problems with Jason and Peter doing, doing that.
I'm going to comment, I live down the street from Jason, so I go by his place a million times a day. Uh, fact, I went by tonight coming here and I actually went around the corner to check things out. Places usually meet, nothing is on the road. Um, even has a front end loader, he gets all scrap, he puts it in the dump trailer. Uh, things are cleared out, uh, there's no safety issues that I could see. Uh, even where he does all this cutting, kinda has an overhang. So even noise is kinda cut down a lot too, and I think you just usually go during day hours anyway. Very rarely do I start before nine o'clock and uh, I mean, I like to be a bit by eight thirty, so, so. Being someone that lives on the street and seeing everything and going by it all the time. Uh, I don't see any issue with it, he's been doing it for twenty years, which he has, and since I've been there. Uh, no one's ever complained, I, I, to my knowledge, I've never had a complaint.
I, I don't really know what the complaint was, all it, it was not written, it was phoned in, my understanding. But. And, and there was no name assigned to it that I'm aware of either. Uh, but in our ordinance, we do allow it, so I just wanted to like, bring it to the board.
Yeah.
Make sure no one has any problems with it, and just. I'd like to just take a poll of the board and make sure that everyone's okay with him continuing where he is.
I'm fine, he's just trying to make a living, these guys over here got their nails guns going at seven o'clock in the morning. Bang, 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 so why don't you have the chest next to me, I said, I really care.
This was a logging town originally. If you say you want to back, you know, keep some of the old stuff. Well, they can't pick and choose, you can have the kinsy little pictures of it, but not actually have the, the wooden, no, this is crazy.
You're okay with it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm okay with it, Joe.
First of all. I do the same, you're dressing, Jason's one like butter. Right, the power, going right across. I've been doing the same thing at property for the last sixty years. I don't start doing until, I've always made the point, I start at eight o'clock, try to get down by five, five thirty. The new number is that, I haven't done as much as past three years because I could medically, this is gonna be, you know, taken care of. But attending depends on. I own from nine feet, exit nine, exit thirty feet all the way down, just having to grow all my wood, plus throw under my materials and wood. And processing, I haven't seen a problem, I've, and if you do over twenty years. His grandfather, so I did three, four years of, of violation. Maybe I could be wrong, but my opinion.
Mike?
I'm all set.
All good, okay. So, you're all set.
Okay.
So I'm gonna come and tell you to stop, tell him to come see the planning board. Thank you for coming in today. All right, um, next to the. Assessment report and this sewer capacity assessment report. I put this on the agenda because I wanted to get some direction. From the board of selectmen. Over here, as to what we are supposed to do, to someone come in for more water and sewer. You guys have had a chance to read the report, remember, I mean, we, we, we kinda talked about this, but it's just, I, I'm trying to figure out. What do we do here?
Um, and that's a good question. We have.
It's just no good answer, but.
I have a couple of good answers. One answer is, we're, um, gonna be talking to the, well, I think we say NHMA. But and, um, uh, town attorney, to, to look at. What we can do, what our options are, because this, this report is only in theory. About how much we could be using if everything was built. Um, but there are still, because the number is unbuilt.
Right, yeah.
One thousand eight hundred forty-two units unbuilt, so we're, we're nowhere near the capacity of our. Sewer treatment plant. But if eighteen hundred forty-two units were built and online today. We would be at eight, well, theoretically, we would be at eighty-two percent, and I say theoretically, because this is based on. You know, two bedrooms, two baths, you know, so many of these and so many of those, and, and in average. Rates per bedroom. Um, this town is anything but average, cuz we know that, that. You know, tonight. We're not gonna come anywhere near the, the capacity. Um, but two weeks ago on Columbus Day, we were, we were probably much closer.
Bringing my water.
So, so, yeah, and the water, well, that's the water level, stop it, um, so it, it's, it's theoretical. You know, I don't know if any. Town can put water restrictions, especially building restrictions on. The theoretical use of the, the capacity as opposed to.
It's a state, I believe you're right.
The state. Um, is only gonna look at ac- actual average daily flows. Can the town receive that by taking any action? And, and I'm not saying moratorium, but like, you know, limiting X number of, of. Houses or ba- bedrooms per year, or I, I don't even know, so we're gonna look into that, number one. Um, and then the second thing is, once we get an answer to that, I think that there'd be, um. A good time to have a discussion with the planning board over what we want to do, first find out what we can do. Then find out through a discussion of what we want to do. So, that, that's my answer.
I, I mean, one of the things that I, that I'm concerned about is that. Changing conditions, no one knows where, I mean, we all talk about. You know. How, how things change and the amount of water that we have could affect the amount of sewer that we, we can make. You know what I mean, and, and those are the things. And, and I noticed in, and uh, raised report talked about that safety factor, you know, maybe you always leave a safety factor. That we're, that, that kinda would be a good thing to have. That's, that's for me, is, is kinda where I think we probably wanna go, but I, I don't know. If, if one of these developers that has all of these. And I'll just take Forest Bridge for example, eight, two hundred and seventy-six unbuilt. If they sold all of that property to somebody. Who had to wire with all to come in and develop two hundred and seventy-six units, that's all. You know, so. Somewhere along the line, and, and then, I mean, it's all an yes, because you don't know, but, you know, you just take a look at what the, the river was. Four weeks ago, you know, you can skip across it today, you, there's no way you're gonna skip across it today, but I mean, if, if we have sustained. Lack of water, then that changes all of the, the numbers, you know, and the, the ability. That's to me, all of that is up to the board, the board select. But the planning board is the one when people come in, how, you know, we get our directions, guys, you know, it says, yes, we can or no, we can't. How, how's that supposed to work, is, I, I guess where I'm coming. How's that communication supposed to work, is it, that, when, when someone comes in and makes an application up, does it need to go before the board of selectmen? To get, let's say, yes, we have this. There's a go, I mean. That, that's kinda where I'm coming from.
Yeah, a- and, and at this point, no, you don't have to do that. And the selectmen don't have any, um. Reason to do that. Based on, we have a permit to withdraw two million gallons a day. Of the treatment plant, we get a couple hundred thousand gallons a day out of the wells. Um, it would not, not. Nowhere near that. You know, we, we may need at some point to buy the, the fourth.
So.
Cell for the actual filtration of it, but as far as the permit to withdraw the water and the, and the. Structure underneath the river, we already have that, so that's not an issue. Once we get feedback from our, from town attorney and NHMA, um, we may have. Some ideas, or, and, and again, I want it to be a discussion with, with the planning board, as opposed to selectmen say this and. And you gotta do it, um, but it hasn't been a discussion of, this is really rough, because again, it's all in theory in the years. We assume we give away, um, from building those eighteen hundred more units. But what, what are we gonna do in the meantime? Um, and maybe, maybe it's, it's nothing on the planning board's side, but it's more aggressive. Um, capital, um, reserve on the CIP. Knowing that we're gonna have to do something, the other component to this and, and, um. We, we knew this was coming, is that we're getting a new permit to run the sewer treatment plant. Um, this year, like within the next two months. And there's gonna be some. Things for that that we're gonna be required to do, some things are gonna be, most things, as I understand it, are gonna be. Uh, operational, like we have to do more testing, you know, do more. Stuff, looking at the water, throw more money at the water before it goes into the river, that's exactly what we have to do, okay? Some of it might be, um, more capital related, we'll be able to buy new equipment. Um, to do stuff to the water before it goes back into the river. But what we don't know is exactly what, what those costs are gonna be. Um, and we're waiting for the final, we have a draft permit that both Ray. The engineer and, um, H two O Innovations, our subcontractor, looking at. Um, but we're waiting to get the final report before. We spend a lot of time and money on engineers that decide how much this is gonna cost and what changes will, you know, by itself. We hope to have that before, uh, the end of budget season, so that we know what to run before. But, but there will be some changes in what we do and what, what it costs us to operate that plant. To get this new plant.
So when someone, when someone comes in. Not as part of this, um, development projects. Capacities that are already there, say it's a new hotel, or say it's. A bunch of commercial development somewhere. Uh, how's the planning board? Deal with that, if it does, I mean. Well, I'm asking, oh, Jay.
Well, I would say like, if they came in tonight. We would have to go business as usual. Once we get some feedback, uh.
And you, you think that feedback's gonna happen shortly?
I, I mean. I think we're gonna get some input. Within the next month. But we're gonna start seeking that out.
I was just trying to find that, I remember that somewhere, they, they have some water that's allocated and they don't use it.
Yeah, that was in, um.
Certain amount of times, like.
Well, here's, here's the.
So there's no, just. There, there's no. There's no, I guess, concern that. According to what Ray said, as far as the sewer goes, we have reached the point. Where we're supposed to have, and what did he call it, we're supposed to do is, that, that the state commends, is the state?
We're supposed to notify the state.
Right.
When we're at eighty percent of the capacity.
Right.
And that's kinda that safety factor, that's already built in, the state builds that in.
Right.
They don't want us to come and say, oh, we're out of sewer. They're always gonna say we're at eighty percent, now we have to stop planning for the, you know, once the other twenty percent is gone. Um. We're eighty-two percent. If those other eighteen hundred units are built.
Sounds like we're a critical mass.
No.
No, not yet.
I mean, but kind of, right, like if developer showed up, we're like, we're ambitious to build.
Well.
And we already promised that they could build.
I mean, it says, based on the analysis, what, what wastewater treatment plant is operating. At approximately forty-three percent of its one point three million gallon design capacity, and fifty-eight percent of its one point oh five. Million gallon threshold that triggers engagement with permitting authorities as defined in the current N D D E S permit. As stated in the N D D E S permit, and that's what you're referring to, is that, that permit, you're gonna, you're gonna be getting that permit?
Well, we've had that permit. It expired.
Right, and that's the renewed permit's gonna be coming in, is that this permit here? And renewed permit will give you recommendations. And, well, well, obviously, might not be able to do all those recommendations all at once.
Correct.
So will that restrict some of the ability to give out more sewer? That we can't.
I don't believe so, I, I believe, first of all. When they, we're gonna get that new permit, say, in the next two and a half months. I don't think they're gonna come in and say, here's your new permit, you gotta make all these changes today. They're gonna give us time to, to do it, but I think the ones that are gonna come online. Most immediately are these operational ones, where we have to test for this and, you know.
P E F, P O S.
P E F, O A S, yeah. Um, so we're gonna have to, you know, get, and, and again, our, our. Contract and service for the sewer knows this, and again, they work in various communities in various states, so they, they understand. Um, this is happening everywhere, not, not just Lincoln. Uh, so I expect that those would come on. In a, in an amount of time that's gonna satisfy D E S.
So the next, right, so, the next part of the question would be. Should we be looking at, and it's the planning board, and that's, I think Corinne brought to some. Should we be looking at? Um, different regulations, modifying our regulations to say, if you. Any new developments that comes in. If you give us a, a projected finish by date and you don't meet that projected finish by date. Or, I'm not ju- just using that for example, that. If you don't meet your projected finish by date, that. Your water and sewer allocations then come back to the town. So they don't stretch those out and then the, the town then has to go bigger, so I think that's, that's where I was going was. Should we be looking at that?
That's, yeah.
Yes, and, and that can be done with like a hotel, you know, that. They've said tonight with their, with their permit, you know, to go, and then, you know, three years from now, still having. Started building.
And we had that.
Oh, we've had it.
We, we've had that there, we've had that at some peak, cuz it's, what happens, or, in so many developments is, they get sold. And then, uh, when they thought they were gonna finish, it gets projected out.
Extended.
Yeah, and, and, so don't, yeah, so don't all the permits go with it, but in reality. I don't, when, when they bought that, they knew what the finish date was. I don't know, I mean, how do you? And we probably, we probably need attorneys, I would think, to look at that and say, doesn't someone need to legally weigh in on, I, I, I'm just asking, is it a legal question?
Well, we, well, we could set a date, I know, an expiration date of the planning board. Um, but what we can't do is like take the landing or Coolidge Falls. Okay, between the two of them is what, eighty-ish unbuilt units.
Yep.
Okay. We have no right to take those, um. Allocations back, because someone at the landing bought this piece of land. Well, it's with, you know, they bought the piece of land where it was calculated in. Now, they might not choose to build on that land for five years or ten years. That's the thing, no, if I buy a lot and I don't build on it for ten years. That doesn't put me at the bottom of the line, the landing was approved, as, as a best, it's a vested project, so that, 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 that kinda reserve. Goes with that project. Um, but then you have other ones, um.
Oh, really?
Could we just ask them to renew the permit?
What's that?
Could we just ask them to renew it? You know? Because like, what if they're like, we're not gonna go, we don't want to, free up the water.
Well, no, I mean, you know, the.
I know that sounds like kind, kind of ridiculous, but like, I love, what if their, their, their minds shake, you know?
I think there's a concern, to, to me, the concern would be, I mean, if I was a developer and I walked in and bought something. I would wanna put it out as far as I can, so I could have my approvals best. But is that the right thing to do for the town, because then you're committing all of that for such a long period of time, to me, there ought to be an. To me, there ought to be an expectation that, if you're gonna build it, you guys had a reasonable expectation of when you're gonna complete it. And then, it, it, you know?
But something like the landing. The developer, the developer has no expertise, he's stopped providing, building roads and selling lots. Alright?
Does the town have an expectation of that, or they, you, you? But then again, I mean, it's confusing, because then again, you go back to what you said is. So we have these allocated, but they're not using them. And we're gonna allow other people, maybe they're gonna come in to use those. And then when they want, i- if someone else buys it, they all, and say, okay, we're gonna develop it. Then the town, what that could do is put the town in a precarious situation where they, they have to either raise a bunch of money to increase what their infrastructure is. Well, you know what I mean? So it, it could really. They could really put the town in a bad position, I don't know how you correct it, that's why the compensation needs to happen, I guess.
Well, I, again, we're looking into that legal aspect, and then I will. In, input from board, uh, from the planning board.
Didn't, didn't you talk about a five-year time limit now? And I thought we had mentioned that at last. Selecting meeting, when we were there, there was a five, about five years, and if nothing happens, they have to renew under the new circumstances. Does that sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable, um, but I think that's gonna come through the planning board, right?
Right. I'm just saying, so. So the plan is, you have five years to, to start doing, or whatever we come up with, and if you don't have it done. Then you have to come back in, renew again, under the new rules and regulations, if we implement them. As we're doing now, say, there's a timeframe, because we have to know what our resources are.
Well, I think there's two things, uh, that, that, you know, one is the, the water, the resources, the water, so we're, but the other one, more importantly too, is that. If the regulations change, gives you the ability to say, now the new ones have to meet these more stringent regulations. So it would give you that ability then to meet.
Even, even in the phase development, if they did a certain phases, and, but they haven't done the other ones, again, whatever the language would be. At that point, now those new ones are under the new laws and regulations, as we hope, so, so grandfather thing doesn't bite us.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
Well, we, we could, I know Paul, you.
Look, I'm trying to look at both sides and think, if I was the developer, I'd be, I mean, the, the town wants to invite these developers to come in. Whether you're a developer or an industrialist, and you're gonna put some commercial, you know, industry, and you, you want to. And we're talking about being diversified tonight, and, you know, we really don't have. So try and think that an industry would come in here, that would require a bunch of water and a bunch of sewer. Would eat this up in a heartbeat, I don't know what industry it could be, but, th- there could be an industry, a beer manufacturing that could come in. And you, you take a look, look at what we have and think it's a lot, it could go away with one industry.
Right.
You know, so, uh, somewhere along the line. Well, you, you have to think like that, because.
I saw a lady in Walmart today, went in to get some salad, she had a shopping cart, it was two-thirds full of oranges. That were in the top, and the top was covered with green developed peppers. Saw it with my own eyes, I don't know what they do with them.
Go ahead, Paul.
Two trains of thought were going on here, one, guy might be probably developing. You can only present, and you can't, you'll put a restriction on five years, you're previous to law suit. Because now you're taking money away that you could, you're invested in the property, make it wait, let me finish. And do it so you're making free, probably, it's potentially decrease the cost of doing this project by fifty percent, or whatever percent. By making them not finishing in a set time, but you have to make, make, do it all. Wait, 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 wait. Turn the thought going. And secondly. About four, five years ago, the town agreed, they'll give water to a point, correct, I'm mistaken, Greg, I mean, I'm all Greg. But they said they would give the water to a point on their, as, as, as a conveyance, like, remember that?
What's that, yeah, same.
But the is. I've had water point taken away from me, the town guaranteed, guaranteed to me, I gave five hundred feet of front, land, twenty feet wide, put a, with the water line in. And then we give me my four, my, my four one inch water cup, it's supposed to be added for night, and a certain town manager told me to go that myself.
Well, that was, you know.
No, it's not here anymore either, that's beside the point. It's totally development, what I'm doing to the property.
Oh, that's good, Mike wants to talk to you, so.
But the is, you could, by doing, well, we, you're top, Paul, we, top of the life, but it's leading to a major lawsuit. If the person coming in knew the circumstances. Then if they're coming in to develop with knowing what was going on, I don't think that there would be a loss for that. Because they know what they're signing up for. The other thing I'm concerned about is our town. What happens if something crazy goes on and stuff, and the car short? I'm coming short, when you're gonna do sewer and water, when you now don't have anything to give. Well, I'm just going, I have a customer, a clear book. And the gentleman who's talking to me, saying at some point in time that they had such low water pressure. That some of the, the people actually had to buy a, uh, a pressure tank. So they could fill and they could have pressure. Alright, and that's a clear book, and this was a short time ago, a while ago, whatever, but it's not that long ago, it was in a reasonable timeframe. And I'm already listening to that, and, you know, and now I'm concerned about, again, if we have this big boost. And we don't have some level of, not restrictions, but. Thought pattern to say, we need to know what your plans are and how you need to do things, so we can plan for the town.
I think we're all saying the same thing here, that, like, truly is that, you know, we don't wanna. Call Peter to pay Paul and be caught in the middle, and then it's the town that's gonna suffer for, because we look at, the way I look at. Part of it right now, I think that, when the sewer treatment plant comes on, and we really gotta do that, I don't know what the cost that is, I've been, I've, I've read numbers from. Twenty million to forty million, so, I mean, that. That's a huge number, you know, and if that comes, if that hits us. Right up front, you know, because things start, one industry comes in here, then we're in real deep, real deep trouble there.
And see, that's why I feel that we have the right to protect. The quality of life, and, and sewer and water is definitely a quality, quality of life for the town people, for everybody.
So I don't want, I don't want you to carry on, we could explain us more stuff to go.
Alright.
Would, would it be good, OJ, to have a, have a combined meet with the, the board of selectmen and the planning board and have Jason there and say. Kind of give us a little direction before we get too, too involved in this, is that something?
Let's, let's find out what his input and NHMA's input is, and then make that decision how we're gonna exactly deal with it.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we have to keep in mind, there's, there's master plan, um, communities, like, like so. Of course, we, we have development agreements with those that, that pretty much guarantee them the water and sewer for what we approve. And they have, um, agreed to build this out over time, not dump the whole, you know, whatever it was.
Number.
So, so, that's kind of a contract, so to, we can't take the, take the. Okay, we can't say, well, you didn't do it in five years, okay, um, so that's, that's one type of thing. The second type of thing, what we talked about, like, the landing is a subdivision. They said we're gonna build X number of lots, they built X number of lots, if you choose not to build on the lot that you buy. We can't go in and take your water rights away and give it to someone else who wants to build. You paid for that lot. It was approved by the town, and it's a vested project. You're guaranteed those water and sewage, we can't take them back just because you don't wanna build your house.
Right.
Okay, so, so with those two types of things, there's not a lot we can do as far as to grab that. It's, it's something like a hotel, um.
It's, it's moving forward that I'm talking, things need to be put in. So we accounted for everybody that we said, yes, you're gonna get your stuff.
And we need to know what we're gonna say tonight.
Yeah, and, and then on the new people coming in. We have these new ordinances, regulations, whatever. Because we need to plan for our town to be able to supply everybody with what's needed. And that's what I'm saying, we have to move forward, not go back and take it again. Like Paul said, yeah, I'm not saying go back and back from Peter to pay Paul, I'm saying that if we've given them that right. And we've done that, then that's the way it is, but moving forward, we could.
You're missing my point, though, you're missing my point. I'm not saying that we take away any of what's already been, um. Bested or calculated.
No, no.
What I'm saying is that, it, it. If a big industry comes in and uses up, and we say, comes in to the planning board and says. We wanna put a, 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 a beer manufacturing plant in here, and we wanna use X one gallons of. Town water, and we, we need X one gallons of sewer, well, I can tell you what, probably everything that's here is gonna go away. You know, there's a lot of what ifs and that, but you need to know, you need to know where you're, where you're at. Because you don't wanna put the town in a precarious place by allowing that to happen. Now, I would hope there's a lot of communication goes on before. That beer manufacturing plant even comes between town manager or selectman and planning board, but I mean, there needs to be that, so you gotta know. You gotta know when you're gonna say no, or you know when you're gonna say, we keep going, and, and I think we're at. Based on what I see in these two reports, I think we're there trying to figure it out, and it's kinda going, but. There's still a little gray area, my, 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 that's why I put it on the agenda to see, you know?
There is definitely gray area.
It's still up to private fire on itself, too. If you had a water tank, you know, we probably didn't have to get back.
Alright, alright, so we're, we're good.
With that is, none of that water goes to the sewer. Okay, and that's, right now, while limiting back there.
Is sewer.
Sewer.
Well, that's not true, though, in a way, because if, if you look at the water. What was the thousand, a thousand foot elevation, and we didn't have enough?
You're running into a life safety issue on water.
Yeah, it said on, on the water.
It's at some like.
Western San.
On a. Full peak with a fire, all that stuff at a thousand foot elevation. They're, they're really doing a thousand fifty.
It says, on that, Western San, it says, main pressure rise zone service area conserve. Post-development under normal conditions of flow, however, under max state demands, existing water system supplies. The water treatment plant and cold springs wells may not be able to refill a public tank fast enough during its on the. So, I mean, we're, and, and, and still keep the pressure there, so we're kinda, that's why I bring this up, because you're kinda, we're kinda there. Sorta, with the water, we're kinda sorta there with the sort, and, 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 and different categories, I guess. One's pressure, one's gallons, you know, but.
I have a question, is there, even, I, I understand not wanting to pull back. You know, permits that people already have, but is there, is there a limitation that a town can say that they're only going to allow. So many new structures that are gonna tap in to be built in a year to kind of, because of this limitation anyhow?
I mean, I wonder if we can, along those lines, if we could do something, again, it would take legalese, but. Maybe if you go to build them all within a certain one year, it's not that you lose them, but your ability to get them. Is based on what the town, you know, that, what's, infrastructure being built around it, I don't know, you know, something like that.
That's one of the questions that, well, we talked about for the selectmen is, is, you know. Can we limit it to X number of, um, new houses per year, new hotel rooms, or, or whatever, units? You know, so instead of, if someone comes in and they wanna build five hundred units. Um, it gets through planning board, it may be that the stipulation that they can only build eighty per year.
Right, it sounds like you kind of have an informal agreement right now with these developments, and it's been working well. But we're starting to get on a managed capacity, I'm assuming that, you know. People buy land, and you don't really wanna say, hey, you have, you only have one more year, and if you don't build, you don't want that, you wanna keep the. Slow build and it stays open, someone just bought a lot as an investment property, that's great, but.
There, there are ordinances that you can adopt. One, one's in particular, it's called a limited growth development ordinance. But those are, they're very cumbersome, it takes, it takes a lot to, to get one through, I mean, because. Well, what that does is, it allows you to regulate your growth based on your infrastructure.
Well, right, so, I don't know what the costs potentially are for that, but if we have to. Plan that this is gonna come down the road in ten years, then we have to start putting money aside for that. I think that, that's a fair thing to, to look at.
That's the C I B for, long-term planning.
Yeah, I mean, something like you said, I mean, I'm gonna give a good lot of facts here, but I mean, a sewer treatment plant is forty million dollars. I mean, she could, you can't just come up with that overnight, I mean, because the, the tax impact of a forty million dollar. Sewer treatment plant on, to have a person here is a lot. It's a lot, it's a lot, there will be a lot on the business, but the average local residential person would. You know, I mean, so, it's not, uh, just from the discussion we've had here. generates a lot of interest, but I mean, it's, I guess. We'll just keep going, and you, yours will.
We're, we're gonna get some input from, again, we're gonna start with NHMA and Jason.
Is the, does the state, have any, is D E S, have any? Where's the wisdom on how you can?
It might be what the discussion, I'm gonna talk to the attorneys first, but, but, the discussion, I'm not sure how helpful they'll be, because. They're looking at eighty percent, and we're at forty-seven, they're gonna look at us like, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Forty-seven.
We're at forty-seven, we're at forty-seven, that's, that's without commitments, adding commitments.
That's who we're actually using, in twenty twenty-four, or whatever the period was, right, forty-seven percent. Of capacity, so, you know, that, that's not even half.
Right.
Whatever you said, half of what we got, I don't know how much NHMA is gonna wanna have about, you know. What, what happens, because like, we're not even halfway there.
But, D E S is the ones that put the requirement on that. Once you reach that, with your commitments, then you gotta go through.
No, no. No, it's not the commitments, it's usage.
And I thought you said commitment.
It's almost including the commitments.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, we, uh, well, we asked, the study was including the commitments, because that's what we asked him to study. The, um, D E S rule, I don't believe.
That's Western San, um, River.
Yeah, when the applicant just tried for a period, three consecutive months exceeds eighty percent of the one point three million gallon design flow. The permit shall submit the, to the permitting authorities, the D E S. A projection of loadings up to the time when the design capacity of the treatment facility will be reached, so. We need to go three consecutive months at eighty percent, that triggers the D E S, okay? Not raise theoretical analysis of what. Will be happening when eighteen hundred more units are built.
So, I thought.
Hey, wait, right now.
Right.
Well, okay, when you look at K B Partners, and he, he's, um, paid four or five. He's given the current peak flow.
Yeah.
The allocated capacity, and the projected peak flow within the, at four point eight cubic feet per second. Uh, and upstream interceptor, it is estimated to be sixty percent of, and, and, and intercept the capacity, which means that. We have to go through the, that the wastewater treatment plant exceeds the threshold for regulatory engagement. So, that they're taking, in this one, he's taking the allocated capacity.
We asked him to do, that was, that was what we asked him to do, it's like, we know we're nowhere near, we knew we were. Less than fifty percent, or near fifty percent, we knew we were in that range. But Ray, what happens if all of these unbuilt units get built? Then where will we be? That was the question we asked him, and that's what he answered. But right, what happens if all of these unbilled units get built, then where will we at? That was the question we asked him and that's what he answered. So it is, it's, it's, it's not what D E S.
I thought it was D E S.
No, they, like I said, we're forty seven percent, we're, we're not even in their radar. You know?
So then, the other thing would be, if we did take on big development, are we then? Being negligent, accepting it, knowing that if everything was on board, we would be young.
If, yeah, we, we need to, and again. With these projections, we're eighty two percent, which means we have to notify D E S. But we still have another eighteen percent before we're at full capacity, um. If, if we start taking on. Uh, you know, allowing huge building projects, um, where. Again, only at fifty percent, well, then we're gonna know, okay, we're already at the eighty two. We're, we're increasing now, we're getting closer to that hundred percent mark when. We have to, we have to have something new there.
Like if we took on one more house at this point. We would be, right, even though this is theoretical, right, we took on that one house. And then everything else was built, and that one house was like, well, you guys knew. Because of this study that it would be over.
With over the actionable threshold, which means we have to notify D E S. At eighty two percent, we're still nowhere near the hundred, not nowhere near, but we still have a lot of room. A lot of single family houses to go and get to. Uh, the hundred percent.
I mean, I think the goal here is to make sure that the town continues to develop. Just like you do with your, your mains and, you know, that are underneath the street, you know, if you're growing. You've only got certain sized mains, well, eventually, you know, you gotta make those bigger to accept all the growth. And that's same whether it's for the water or the sewer and. It's, I think, within the planning board and the forest lifeline's responsibility to make sure that that happens. In a reasonable manner so that we're not putting out forty million dollars just like that. You know, or we're not having to upgrade all of the water sewer below the street. Cause it just hit us today, you know, so, I mean, that, that, that's what we should be looking for, it's how do we continue to. Upgrade what we have so it doesn't just catch us. You know, i- isn't that kinda like?
With, with pipes and, and.
Water plants and cells and.
But with the, with the sewer treatment plant.
It's all or none.
It's all or none. You know, are, is, is there something we could do to pre-treat water go, I don't know, but, but. Whatever we do down there is gonna be one big project.
Then we need to, maybe we should be, I mean, to me, the board then needs to look at, okay. When you find out what that cost is and when you figure out how the hell we're gonna pay for it. And one of the things that we're, that the planning board looks at is impact fees, you know, and. We just, Karina gave us information on someone that she thought could help us maybe. Put this together and that person's gone. And she's not sure, she has, she hasn't given up, but she's. That, that person's gone and not really out there to be able to, like, there's not a bunch of companies that do that.
Yeah, it, it was very. Impact studies for, for municipalities, and there's one guy who did it for New Hampshire and. Nearby states, he retired and, um. Like, she knows of no town that has done an impact study other than with this guy, so we're out looking for that. Resource also.
But those, those are some of the things that, those are under the planning board's purview to get those started. We have, the town has a lot of the pieces, like a C I P plan, things like that, we, we have those, we have those pieces, but. We, we need someone that can help us put it all together.
And we do have that for water and sewer too.
Yeah, and, 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 but it's. I mean, I just get concerned if, I, I see us working, we have all these things going, but. I don't know if they're gonna happen in time, so we really need to continue doing.
In the master plan in two thousand sixteen, the public was, you know, they were concerned about it, so. It's smart to be putting it out there and start planning on, and I don't know with the life expectancy, we've done one of those. And maybe we won't ever get to eighty percent, because there's only so much space.
You're always better off to have more capacity than not enough. But, you know, and, and looking at that a lot more, like, anyway, we're running up on that, they don't have anymore.
Okay, based on race units, just, just ballpark map. But every fifty two, every fifty units you build, you're using one percent more capacity. Okay, so all of these get built, we're at eighty two, someone comes in here and wants to build a hundred unit. Project where the houses are. Then we're at eighty four, so there's a lot of. There's a lot of room, it's, it's, we, we are not just, I mean. We shouldn't sit through nothing. But we're not a panic level left, yeah, okay, we're, we're just, just, you know.
Yeah, it was on your radar nine years ago, but now.
It's still on her, it's still on her, but, but if we're gonna go into. As I said, if, if someone comes in with a industrial based project. Approaches a town like that, and it would employ people or bring housing and whatever it would do, we could be in. We could have to say no, because we don't have, we might have to say no, and. When we're talking about the master plan, we're talking about diversification too, you know, whether it's housing or projects or employment. So you gotta look at this stuff.
Maybe they could just buy the property from people who already bought the water.
But there's a lot, there's still a lot of property in like. I mean, any of that is huge.
I don't know that. Another three hundred over three, in the back of the clock, the other three hundred, the old housing property across the road over there.
Right, but the housing property and the forest rich property are all included in that report.
Okay, so. Next, we'll discuss proposal changes to the Atlanta new plan ordinance. Site plan, new regulations, so they're in regulation. We have. We have, Karina gave, did she give everyone one of these N H M A guidelines? Okay, so we have deadlines, except for one to make change to ordinance, to regulations. If we're gonna do changes to, um. Checklist and applications, that can be done without having to go to the town, town, but if we're gonna change. Regulations, they have to be done and ready by. But I think it's hot. It, it's February, is it February third? It says last day for official copy of final proposal. To adopt amending zoning ordinances, but that, that's the last day to final, so you have to have two meetings. So you, you need a, you have your first meeting and then you have your second public hearing, so.
January twenty second is the last day to post. Any new, uh, amendments, ordinances.
Right.
So we, so by January twenty second, we have to. Um, have everything voted on and approved, managed to go, a publication to post in time.
And once it's February third. Yeah, I'm.
I, okay, so. January twenty second is when we have to have ready to post and advertise, right?
I think that January, last day published enough is a final planning board public hearing.
Right, and then we. Then between January twenty second. And February second, we have to hold a public hearing. And then on February third, we have to have the final proposal for.
So you have, right, so your second public hearing can be February third, cause that's when you want to adopt that the second public hearing?
No, uh, February second.
February second, okay, well, it's only one day, so it's a different.
Right, but, but in, in order to hold a legal meeting on February second, you have to send out. The advertisement on January twenty second. So we have to vote to approve or recommend a, a ordinance change. Before that January twenty second date.
Right, and.
So that's, that's our timetable right there.
So.
We should be focusing on the land use ordinance changes first and foremost. Um, I know Sarah has, has. I know the town staff has. I don't think we have it, but throughout the year has wrote down their recommendations. Of things that, that they wanna bring up to us, and I think we gotta get, let, maybe let's do Sarah's tonight and then ask the town to, you know. The days next meeting.
All right, go in your books. In your books. Do I look, have your land use plan ordinance, which is the third marker, I believe. Yep. And Sarah said, no defined lighting standards. And can not exceed point oh one foot candles at the property line. I haven't read this enough to know that we don't have one, but I'm assuming that we don't. Sarah has said that. This is all boring stuff, but if we don't, we'll try to bite off some of it, and we don't need to do it all at once either, I mean.
No, I mean, there are six points tonight. At least discuss them all, we might have to.
Right.
You know. It might be, we go back to her with a question about one of these, but.
There's nothing in here that I see.
I'm trying to get to the lighting, where's the lighting outwards?
Wow, it would be under.
I don't know.
Okay.
Exterior lighting, page twenty five.
See, they can see a particle five and just on exterior lane.
Page twenty five.
Page twenty five.
I might have an updated version.
Parking and Austria loading on page twenty.
Using an older version.
Exterior lighting?
Exterior lighting.
I've got it on twenty six. Fixtures used to illuminate parking areas, buildings, other portions of the property shall be shielded so as not to shine on streets or invasive properties. We need to know, how do we figure out? Her example says cannot exceed point oh one foot candles, that's property line, we just Google it and say. What's the typical? I know, without, we don't know, I mean, you look at A I, I mean.
I guess first of all, do we want to set a limit like that of X number of foot candles at the property?
I would think we would.
I do too. Okay, can we agree to that and then ask Sarah for? Is point one, is that ridiculous, or is that?
No, I'm a tall mark, I know. He said something about he was gonna do some type of low lighting because of the neighbors with surfers later. I thought it came up on this building across the street.
We've asked him if it, if it's dark sky compliant. And maybe that's the language you wanna use, I don't know what, I don't know what foot candles is, and I don't know what dark sky compliant is, but. We've been using dark sky. For South Peak, I think it was for across the street here, and it was other places. That we talked about at the common man.
I got A I. Typical light levels of property boundaries are low, often between point zero five. And point five foot candles with lower levels required to residential property lines and higher levels sometimes prevented for commercial. And security purpose, it's exact requirement depends on the J the property use. Residential business local regulations, but general goals prevent light transfer trespass and nuisance layers. So they say that residential properties typically are. At a maximum point zero five. Commercials are point one. So I guess we would need, probably wanna have a residential and a commercial application. Well, since they're both different lighting requirements, so do we have Sarah do that, or do you wanna process that?
Well, let's put it in. And then say, sorry, that makes sense. Yes or no question, yeah.
We're looking at property line, are we talking also a certain type of light? Maybe one, you know, I'm trying to think, one with directional light, so that.
But the book handles is, is, is what's leaving your property, so they come in there with a, I think they have a meter that shows you what. What it is.
But with this property, it's mixed use, would that be commercial?
Yeah.
Across the street as an example.
I think, well, I, I think it's, it's residential, it means all residential except that his.
The whole wall of floor is commercial, isn't it?
One, one room, one room is like, is gonna be used to be often, and that is all apart.
On page twenty six, we'll, we'll get back to Sarah, but just ask her to give us residential and commercial.
I would say that a residential. Uh, limit and then a commercial.
Well, I'd be typical.
And they don't have, I mean, they could be less, and we can revise them, but at least if we have some standard, it sounds like she's saying. You know, we don't have any standard, so if we had a standard, even if we tended to be a little. More restricted, we could lessen it later on. We'll ask her that, lock coverage. No requirement for residential uses, does this include large apartment complexes? Lock coverage is, if I were.
Can you tell you by the ten?
District regulations is what I think it is.
Yes. So they call it the world, uh, graph, uh.
Yeah.
Um, I found on page thirty five, a lot, a lot of coverage requirements, I think, those standards. They, or what they, thirty five, I believe it's thirty five. Um, second, uh, number four. Yes. But the lock coverage is actually, I think it's on the, on the. It's in the schedule, it's the lock coverage.
Right, it's in the lock coverage, and then if you look at footnote number one.
Land just said room.
Dimensional chart is the name of the.
Five dimensional charts and that's one over, what is it, thirty six?
Okay, the last. Row is percent the percent of lot coverage. When you go across eighty, seventy, seventy, then the next one says sixty and it's footnoted at one. Which applies to non-residential uses on, but as do the next four columns.
No, okay, next one, but nu- number three underneath that. Says for all other residential uses.
Yeah.
The maximum lot size is at both per unit basis, so. She's saying that 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 doesn't.
Hmm, that's true.
She's saying that that doesn't say just for one residential, this is going on a multiple unit basis, right? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So a three family dwelling, we're requiring forty five thousand square feet now.
Fifty thousand square feet.
I guess technically they could build a forty five thousand square foot, three unit building.
Residential.
Residential, which which is fifteen thousand square feet per unit.
Per unit.
Um.
And that's definitely what we've done, right? We divided them up by fifteen thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we've been doing. Um, for residential uses, now with that somewhat recent. Um, ordinance we passed that if if they're building an apartment building. Um. Then it would be the same as like a hotel where it's it's not residential, it's commercial. And then they have to build it with the seventy percent or eighty percent coverage ratio.
ratio.
So so. We we don't have a specific coverage ratio, but we have to, we're putting down a fifteen thousand square foot. Minimum lot size, which I mean, even the crazy houses would fit on fifteen thousand square foot. Lot size.
Can we just? Can we amend the? Um, dimensional chart to include wording that. Minimal requirements. For residential uses, single, a single residential use, and then it's. Then we we're not, we're not grouping it in with a three unit, so that we could say that. The minimum lot size for a single residential. Use own is fifteen thousand square feet.
But it says that in very first row, right, minimum lot size.
Where's the seven?
Minimum lot size, first row.
I just, well, eh, no, cuz it it, right. It gives different ones for different.
So.
Zones. So I guess it does cover it.
Yeah, I would say it would cover it.
But wait a minute, wait a minute, this says minimal size for duplexes use only. The line says.
Right, but then all other uses is the next one, so you're right, the first one is duplexes, the second one.
No, they gotta have something that deals with just residential, I think.
The minimum lot size is applicable on a per unit basis, so if all of the uses. It's fifteen thousand square foot per unit. Which is what we've always had, we've always been.
Right.
Except in the mountain residential.
Or it's thirty thousand.
It's thirty thousand. But again, based on fifteen thousand square feet.
Example of five more. Five unit multiple building, my present seventy five thousand square feet. I think it's, I think our chart's good enough to interpret between the square footage that we have and the percentage of lot coverage.
Okay, good, cuz I agree with that, I don't think there's any need to change.
Well.
Does this include large apartment complexes?
Yes.
Well, no, actually. Actually, it it could, but if developers gonna, uh, cuz we given the choice of 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 plan for site plan as a commercial development. Uh, just like a hotel.
Right.
If they're doing an apartment complex, so.
Just like over here.
Does this include the the large apartment complexes? No, that's that's uh, allowed under commercial. Is is the answer to her question, I don't think we need to change any rules.
Oh, I just think we say the second bullet point, that that we're okay with that, we we don't see the need to investigate that anymore.
I didn't ask you if that's residential or commercial, you said residential.
Yes.
So it's like residential, commercial.
No, it's it's residential, yeah.
It's multi.
We passed a, his, when they were building the Hampton Inn.
Yeah.
Okay, that's commercial, the hotel, no question. Um, on that same piece of land, if he decided, okay, instead of building the hotel, I wanna build apartments.
Yeah.
Instead of building ninety six, so whatever he has, he could build three apartments because of the square foot rules.
Right.
Okay, so our thought is, okay, if you have a piece of land and your choice is three apartments or ninety hotel owners. We're never gonna have apartments, so we said if you're building um apartments. You know, full time year round apartments. You could, you, even as a residential use, you can, you can, you can um apply under the. Commercial lot coverage to build the same, you know. Same same lot coverage, square footage, height, all of that.
And that's similar to the hotels being built now, cuz they have some that are rooms.
On the far side.
Far side.
Yeah.
That's on that, right.
Seven, I believe.
But he built, he built those before we passed that rule, I believe.
No.
Yeah, this is the first one, I remember when he came, that was the first one.
I think that's right.
The one up here, one being, one helping build, he had seven condos put on the same property as the commercial space.
Right, but he also had employee housing that he was gonna use.
That was the ones with the seven condos.
Right.
Right.
And when you said lot, that you're the fifteen thousand. Is it, when it says lot area and yard in front, did that include the parking lot? And any outbuildings and the building include any. Basic price when you're changing that service from natural ground to.
That's not the disturbing.
That's still more.
That's that's the whole lot that we building, so you buy a piece of land, yeah. It's fifteen thousand square feet of land, you can put a house on. Man, which is why when it's, when there's subdividing. Um.
Except for non-residential, it's more.
Right. And and we can get into the whole master plan total density thing later, but uh. You know, if you, if if you, if you subdividing a piece of land into three lots, each one needs to be fifteen thousand square feet, you gotta build a lot.
Well, I think we'll say that on the bullet point number two, that we're okay with what we currently have. Number three, no setback requirements for expansion of non-conforming use, allowed outrage. No setback requirements for expansion of non-conforming use, you can't expand on non-conforming use unless you. There's something about expanding a lot, you can't say that's not.
Um.
I I know, I've read that a hundred times.
I think you're right, but maybe that's been our common understanding with all the wording that's important. Where's that gonna be?
Um. It's in the definition, but I like, it seems, but. A structure use or lot that does not conform to the regulations of the district we did located. Also, I hear that's wording about non-conforming. Okay, non-conforming, yeah, the whole section on it. And non-conforming use may be continued subject to the requirements set forth in the section. Can't expand, uh, for me, may not be expanded, except upon finding by the zoning board of justice. And and she's saying that no setback requirements for expansion of non-conforming use. You. If you have a non-conforming use, you can't expand it unless it goes to the zoning board. And the zoning board will have to waive the setback. Right?
I don't know if they have to waive this, they should consider the setback, but if the expansion. The nature and purpose of the existing non-conforming use so as not to constitute a different use. And it will not have a different or detrimental impact on the neighborhood, which if it's, if it's.
But that's all part of the zone.
In the setback, it's up to the zoning board.
It's up to the zoning. I mean, the zoning board is one that that will tell you whether you can infringe upon the setback or not.
Right.
And if it's a non-conforming use and you wanna expand it, now if you have a. Yeah, I mean. What else would you wanna do with a non-conforming use? A non-conforming use, you can, i- if it goes away, it has to be rebuilt in its current footprint. As long as it's done within a certain amount of time. And then if you're a non-conforming use that you wanna expand, you can't do that unless you go to the zoning board adjustment. And the zoning board of adjustment will tell you whether or not you could waive or or change setback. Would be my thought, make that wrong. Let's get to that hour. But that's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I I agree with you, I.
It's not allowed, it's not allowed.
The ZPA would have to look at it and say, this is a non-conforming use, they're looking to expand it, it's within the setback, do we allow it or not?
The the thing here, he writes at the end, it's allowed outright, it's not allowed that way, it has to go to the ZPA.
It has to go to the ZPA.
And it and it's in our ordinance, it says that.
Yes.
That's pretty good then. That one, that one, we should be, we should be okay with that one too, we shouldn't have to change anything.
I agree.
Minimum lot size of parent lot or clusters.
So so. That's a good point, I think, so.
Wait, you're playing out, lot and lots, does it? What's what's a parent lot?
Okay, you're gonna subdivide a lot into. Six um, six residents, six single family houses.
Yeah.
All right, so we know up beginning, it has to be ninety thousand square foot. Lot to do that.
Fifteen thousand, that's right.
Okay. Um, I guess she's saying, is there a minimum lot size for the parent lot for a cluster subdivision where? A cluster subdivision, instead of taking a fifteen thousand square foot lot, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, that you put. All of the houses down here. And then the land around it, okay, so you're clustering them in one area, and then all of this becomes open space, yeah. Um, which which makes it again more affordable, cuz you're only running water, sewer, electric to this little corner. Yeah, and then you have all of this common free space over here, now, do you wanna do that for? Like, whatever's just a three unit, you know, on on one acre of land. And I put a cluster subdivision on a one acre of land, and I'm only gonna have three units, but I'm gonna stick them all next to each other.
So I think that you wanna limit, you wanna limit. Or state. What does it say, cost of subdivision is, does it give us?
Let's say you put put the ordinance set to that, because I don't know what the, I don't know if we even allow it or we.
Some definitions, but it's a, it's a cluster thing here and.
Yes, uh, article six, section state. Yeah.
I mean, pages don't match up.
Because I have twenty twenty three versions.
And book, when you want to book.
With all the changes.
You were supposed to, you were supposed to print your white books today.
The binder on it.
Okay.
She she can print out a new one.
Cluster development, page thirty nine.
Sounds great.
helpful, because.
I mean, basically, it says that it.
Three B says the whole thing.
Right, it has to, it has to meet the the fifteen thousand square foot per unit number. So.
Plan board may not approve any cluster development which has less than fifteen thousand square feet per unit.
Well, a single house can't be a cluster development.
Right. A duplex.
Two, right.
It has to be multiple structures, has to be multiple structures.
So so you, I guess you could call it, if you put two houses. On a thirty thousand square foot lot, and you put the two houses together and then all common space deeded. As this says, deeded open space with two lots.
So two would be considered?
That's that's, that's how I would, if if I came in here, that's how I would say this, this.
Well, that's how I would read.
Right, that I wanna, I wanna build a cluster development with with two units, is there any downside to it? Units have to be thirty feet apart.
Well, cluster developments are only allowed in certain zones anyway.
Okay.
So cluster developments are only allowed in general use district. General use three, village center, they're not allowed in village residential, only by special exception. And general residential, rural residential is yes, residential is yes, and small business, then it's small business district is not. So they're only allowed in certain districts, so that that would make a difference in. Uh, I think that one's fine.
That's why Herman could build a duplex at the end of Pleasant Street.
Right, cuz there wasn't enough land for the duplex.
Yeah, but this, that wouldn't have, the cluster development ordinance didn't didn't matter to that. That was a total, generally just based on square footage. It's 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 just whether or not square foot, I mean, for him to have to do a cluster development, they had to be fifteen thousand square feet per unit.
But this minimum lot size of parent lot is immaterial, cuz we've got, we've got fifteen thousand square foot per unit one. Doesn't matter what the parent one is, it all has to add up to fifteen thousand square feet, right?
That's not normally how cluster developments work, though. Normally, like if the town says you need two acres, for example, to build a house. That you wanna put it, and you wanna have a cluster development, because you wanna have that open space or you have wetlands. You got your, this isn't broadening it at all, it's not make, it's not allowing them to build a house on a five thousand. Square foot deeded lot and then leaving the rest open, it's not allowed.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you have, as long as the total lot. Meets the requirement of fifteen thousand square foot or two units or four units, then it's allowed. You may only build on one small little section of that parent lot. And the rest is all green space or open space, or maybe combination of. Open space and streams or wetlands or whatever, you know, that you can't build on, but the parent lot is what. What they go on, typically, you take all of that, you take wetlands and waterways off of that before you do it anymore.
And it says that.
Yeah.
It says wetlands, yeah.
What if we remove the thirty feet from each other? Right, am I reading that? No free standing structure shall be closer than thirty feet, so you could have, how is it, ten feet?
Yeah, but, well, that's, that comes with, I would think with fire protection, you wanna have.
Closer than thirty.
Have setbacks of fifteen, probably on property one.
Can we allow it, so it's closer?
No. You can't do closer. But as I just said, I, there's fire rules, it's a.
It says it right there.
Thirty feet.
As will comply with the latest poker requirements for fire protection. Or whichever is less, so they can do it, if the Vulcan changes it, it says. Instead of thirty between buildings, we allow allow twenty, and it's in the Vulcan code, they could do that, but. That's up to the fire marsh, that's not up to us.
I looked at South Peak on the houses, man, one house on one street catches fire. What else on the other street is gonna catch fire? If they're so close to each. They're so close to each other.
We haven't learned anything, because you take a look at the old mill house. Throw a rocket sometimes, it kill them, I mean, they're, they're close.
Yeah.
So this one's okay, we all right with that one?
I agree.
Alright. Is there a floodplain overlay map? Now, that, that, that's an interesting question, because it's supposed to be. Remember, they just redid that, right? It, it was supposed to have been. Updated, I don't know if there is one.
Yeah.
No, 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 that they prevented the town with for quite a provision for floodplain down here.
Yeah, they were hundred feet off.
Well, they.
They sent some.
Old one was. Whatever, and estimate. They redid it. In, in. That area down by eleven was somewhat of a controversy, but they redid it.
Jay, are you still here?
Yeah, I'm here, there is a floodplain overlay on our map, but I don't know the last time it was updated, so I can find that out.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could do that, that'd be great, then we can. I think it was updated within the past five years, I wanna say.
Yes.
There was one included, uh, master plan too.
Oh, there's one where?
Well, with the master plan, I don't know.
Is it a floodplain?
It says, town of Lincoln master, well, yeah, flood prone areas, so I'm assuming.
Yeah, maybe flood, yeah.
Okay.
Usually FEMA does the floodplain.
I think Jade's right, that there, there is one that exists, and and if it's not. If it's not in the current, um. Site plan. Ordinance. It should just be included, and I don't think we need to.
No, 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 no. Jake, i- i- if there is one. And it's small enough. Could you include it? To, you know, make a copy so we can put it in our books to show floodplain?
Um, yes.
Well, I don't know how small it gets, if it's, if it's not legible at that small size and it's not worth it, but. Maybe to have one. Like we have, uh, the general district ones in the town here, maybe we could have a floodplain map. That we could, you know, if we had a question, we could at least look at it. And see.
Yeah, we can ask our mapping company, I will say, like, if you go to the FEMA website, you can definitely type in an address. Anywhere in the state of New Hampshire, well, anywhere, and it'll pop up, you know, the floodplain, but we also do have that overlay. And I feel like it was updated, cause I know that there were zoning amendments with FEMA in the last two years. That towns had to adopt, um, so I'm, I'm pretty sure it was probably updated, but I can double check.
So you, do you know, Jade, if. On our checklist. Is there a question about floodplain? I, I don't have.
Uh, I, I believe so, and I know that it's also within like the land use. Permit application, so I've had, I've dealt with two recently. Um, so one person actually had to like move their structure, because it was in the floodplain, uh, after we looked at the overlay.
So, so we could say that there, there is a floodplain overlay map, and it's, it's also checked out during the application process. Right?
Yes, yes, it is.
Jade, you said you checked it, is, is it? Is it an online thing, where you check it on, like the, the, the tax maps?
Yeah, so if you go to our interactive maps, on the left-hand side, there's like a little tab that you can click on. That has different layers, so like you can put on the zoning layers, but there's also like a little plus sign that'll drop down another menu. And then you can, you can see different, different things that can expand, and one of them is floodplanes, and it'll, it'll show you like the. High watermark, it'll show you the fifty-year floodplain, it'll show you the hu- hundred-year floodplain. And, um, like I said, I can, I can kinda reference that to the FEMA website to see if it's the updated one, or just reach out to our mapping company, but. Uh, like I said, I feel like it was updated recently, cause this, this person individually, uh, individual that I'm talking about. When they purchased their home, they said that it wasn't in the floodplain, and like I said, FEMA had done that update in the last couple of years, and I know that it. It significantly changed some properties, um, so I'm wondering, I, I think that it was probably updated, but I don't know. If I'll be able to condense it on like a small map for you, but I can see what our mapping company can do.
Actually.
I think it's more useful online, like.
Right.
As an overlay.
As long as they have to look at the.
You can zoom in, yeah.
As long as we have to. We are checking it through the application process and making sure that. It's not in there, and that. And if you check and see what. When that revision was done, just so we have an idea, you know? Um, that's all of it, that's all we really need.
Yeah, and I mean, if you wanted to, you could always reference that you, they could use of, you know, they could check out the mapping or whatever, and use the layer or something like that, but. It's definitely available to everyone online.
I think you wanna make sure that it's the updated version, and that it's checked prior to, it's checked as part of the application process. That's all.
Yeah, the application, some subdivision requirements. E four. Areas of. Special flood hazard with base flood elevation lines to include in relation to the special flood. Areas, areas subject to the shoreline protection act. Setback lines to include setbacks from wetlands, so it's the wetlands, it's covered in multiple. Uh, requirements in, in this checklist.
So that, so that, that whole point would just say, yes, there is one, and.
And. Is there?
Is there a specific, next one is, is there a specific shoreline, shoreline. Floodplain overlay district, or is. Or is the intent to call attention to the NHDES standards two hundred and fifty feet? We have, um. We have something in there. On shoreline flood protection, like just. Just send that to somebody, you know.
It is, it says, uh, in the checklist, areas subject to the shoreline. Protection Act with lines to include various setbacks within the shoreline land protecting area. So we have that as a requirement. But is there a specific shoreline floodplain overlay district? I don't know.
Can I ask Jade a question? Jade, uh, do we have a mapping of the town for zoning? With areas presidential, commercial, general use? We do.
Yes, that's also available online as a layer.
Yeah, the one online is pretty handy, cause.
I, yeah, so that's right off our website then, right?
Yes, yeah, intera- interactive maps, I believe, is what it's called, correct Jade?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a whole floodplain development district.
Um, okay.
With some page forty of our language form. And deals with FEMA. Flood elevation, that those are definitions. I don't, I don't see a shoreline. Right here. Page forty-seven, shoreline protection district. And it is. Call attention in. Two hundred and fifty feet. Yes. I don't see anything that, that shoreline thing, it says two hundred and fifty feet for every. That's two hundred and fifty feet for.
Solid waste facilities.
And to erect accessory structures and conduct other activities consistent with the operational facility, right, that, that solid waste facility. It doesn't say anything about any other structures. And, and maybe she's right, maybe in this one. We could. Amend our shoreline protection district to say that. It needs to meet the New Hampshire D E S standard.
Yeah, I, I don't understand what she, like, is she saying we should? Just call attention to the D E S standards, or should we enact a number?
Well, the D E S sta- the D E S standard is two hundred and fifty fifty, so I don't think we can change that, because of the yes. That's what it's called, so maybe if we just. Put wording in our shoreline protection district, um. Section. That says. That.
I believe if you're gonna do anything within two hundred and fifty feet of the shoreline, you need the D E S.
You do.
And they'll give you a percentage that you can disturb. And then that includes trees.
They don't let, they, they typically don't allow you to do a lot of it.
Because. Some of those buildings, well, you know, some of these condos are right, if they're not limited, that was ten years ago, but then the new development. Across the street, on Peak, some of those houses are.
Some of the condos that were done originally, those ones had problems with the shoreline district, and they had to do something with that, I remember. That's back, back of Bat Rock, you say, right, when they did those condos, Joe?
On South Peak, yeah, first ones on. Beachwood. But this one's went up on the left, down, to the back.
Yeah.
And you have to do that also there. Make sure they weren't in the floodplain.
I think all we need to do is just say that they need to meet. The New Hampshire D E S standard.
And then within the permitting company, yeah.
But at least it, it, it would be in our, our ordinance, it says. That, that they have to meet that.
I agree, maybe we can get. Sarah to suggest specific wording.
Right.
To add. I, I agree with her, I just don't know what, what words to use to vote on.
And.
So we'll ask.
I re- I had a permit that was subject to this. And those permits to build and disrupt are limited to years. Just to know, or at least my my bound.
Limited.
And what did you get that from, your town or the D E S?
Yes, yeah, it was a separate, and then you have to get a separate permit. But they do.
So.
You have to start over.
Right, on, on, on a Sarah's. Things for the land use plan ordinance. Um, we have two that we need to look at, ask her to look at. The first one is the lighting. And get some wording. About. What you would recommend for residential and commercial book handles. And the last one, ask about some wording for the, including the two hundred and fifty foot standard.
And the others, we're fine believing as is, or the answer is, it's like a floodplain, it's yes, we already have it.
So, okay. I think what I'm gonna do is say that we've covered that tonight. I really don't wanna, don't want. We're gonna start over there, I don't want.
Yeah, I, I mean. I. Probably, site plan regulations and subdivision regulations, we should wait on, the next thing we should address, and I'm not saying tonight, but at our next. Meeting like this, the stormwater management ordinance, she has three suggested changes. Um, again, those would have to go.
That's gonna be a longer discussion.
Whole other discussion. So, but let's, let's put that as the next thing we.
On the agenda.
We do, um, of, of Sarah's stuff, but then we also wanted to take the input of the town.
On the review, the. Sarah's comments about the land use. Plant ordinance, we did one out of.
The four.
The way of a lot, that's okay. We'll get there, we just gotta keep working. Depends on how many applications we get, it could be, it was good that we didn't have that, so.
Does the New Hampshire Municipal Association suggested changes?
Yeah. I don't want to.
That's in a separate. Thing, yeah.
Just flip it over, boy, see the back. Is that it right there?
That's it?
Is it, is that it?
It was on the back of Sarah's. Letter. It was, it was. Uh, paperclip.
Isn't there one with the border right there? He's on.
This is all my stuff, uh.
That one, no.
Oh, this is a long one.
Some of those things from NHMA like don't pertain to us, just for different various reasons, but some of them do, so that's just like an overall. View, but the list of suggestions that I've typed up in-house, that I'm gonna give you guys for your next meeting, I just finished it today. Um, I was planning to send that to you guys in the next day or two, kinda lists the ones that, um. Would pertain to us, I guess, but, um, I think it's very informational, and if there's any other ones that you see on there. Um, you know, but ones about parking and then the ADUs.
So you've gone through this and picked out the ones that, um. Definitely apply to us, and you've got to include those suggested changes with the other changes that the town staff has come up with?
Yes.
I guess I'm. Yeah.
That whole week. And do those all at once, yeah. I, I think that's a good idea, and Jade, you said you were ready to send those out in the very near future?
Uh, yeah, I just finished that document today, there's probably one other thing, I just wanna tweak on it, um, so I'll probably send that out to you guys. Uh, by the end of day tomorrow.
That would be great, and then. That would give us plenty of time to read.
Cause, yeah, I mean, we don't have, we have nothing to do with building laws.
Right, there's a lot that don't, that don't pertain to us, I guess, because of the building code and, and things like that, I mean, all good information to have. Um, but yeah, the ones that do, I've, I've picked out.
The revised law on accessory dwelling, we would wanna look at, uh.
I think it's very helpful that she.
Yeah.
Gone to and picked out the ones that mattered the lots and put them on that list, and I'd say we go through. That whole list of Jade is gonna send us. I don't know if we have time at the next meeting, but at least the next time we have a. Work session like this.
If you do that, I think good.
Yeah, I think so.
Alright. Going back. Training, we're still up for that. Land use permit spreadsheet, everyone get a copy of that. Town planner update, Karina has. Um, sent out. Job descriptions and advertisement for the town planner. Um, and she sent it off to the New York Municipal Association.
American Planning Association. And was looking to get it onto the state of Maine.
And that's. Yeah, and that, yeah. And we have advertised on our own, so. Let's see. We're, we're, we already worked on some of that, we talked about the dates. As on, at, discuss states, legal notices, public hearings, formal votes. Um, discuss states and legal notices for public hearings on capital improvements plan C I P for twenty twenty-six. So we need, we need to. Formalize that date. Uh, when we're gonna do that. Did everyone get a copy of the C I P? Did anyone get a copy of the C I P?
Was that like last, last meeting, do you know?
Hey Jade, can you see if you can get everybody a, a copy of the C I P? That way there, they can have it to review it, so we'll be ready to discuss it when we. Have to approve it.
Uh, yes, I can, I, last, I knew, I think Carol was working on some revisions, but I'll double check with Karina tomorrow, cause Carol's not back into the office until Friday. So I'll get back to you guys tomorrow.
Alright. Um, and, and then we'll just, Karina, it sent me something about the dates. When we set that up, so, um. We'll set that up. But everybody needs to look at it. And I suppose we probably. We could put it on our agenda for the next meeting, let everybody look at it, put it on our agenda for the next meeting, and if anyone has any questions, we can answer them then.
I'd like to see it as a board before we have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's what I'm saying. Stormwater management. Did we have anything on stormwater management for, see the circle? An update, Jade, do you know?
I have no update.
Okay. Um. Can you ask Karina, as much as I asked her to stop this busy, um, to see if she can reach out to South Peak and get us an update?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can, I can email Scott Misselli tomorrow.
Okay, so we can have, have an update for our next meeting?
Okay.
I think, it's no problem. Does anyone from the board have something they want to talk to you?
Um, I was driving through over the weekend, and I just went there by there tonight. Down by Jean's Playhouse and all that area along with behind the buildings that. Um, that the gentleman that was here when we had that impervious five hundred.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's no stone, or there's nothing.
Put that stone down.
He was supposed to put a stone down, prevent the water, slow it down, so they didn't have a vote, oh, this. Perhaps that's done yet, I'm just saying, I know it's, hey, hey Jade.
Is there a chance you could have Sean?
No.
Take a look at that, because that was a requirement that the, the board asked him to do. Um, was to put five-inch line of stone from the edge of the pavement, you remember how far up we were gonna do it?
Ten feet, right?
I think you.
Yeah, so that, when, when the water came off the pavement, it would slow it down, and they, you know, it wouldn't, where, where any erosion, there'd be no erosion, yeah. Is there a chance, can I look at that?
Okay.
Um, can I ask you another, or Jade? If something like that, would we have like addition, um, approval condition things or open-ended? Do you guys keep track of that, is there a spreadsheet or a list that we could have that's open-ended? Make sure that things are getting cleaned up?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have a spreadsheet for your guys' open-ended discussions. You know, I mean, Louis kind of came in, he, uh, you know, I, I don't have a spreadsheet like that, no.
Is there a way, I guess I'm just asking a question, so when the board meets. And we put a condition or tell someone that they have to do something. Who follows up on that, is it Sean, the code enforcement, who's gonna make sure that when the board votes on something that is implemented? Like this stone thing that we talked about, do you have any idea how that's done, how that's processed?
Well, I mean, I think that right now, you know, you asking for Sean to look into it is definitely one way of looking into it, but I believe, you know, it's kind of. Up to you guys to hold maybe compliance meetings after conditions have been met, uh, conditions have been made. You know, and if, at those compliance meetings, you could just invite them in and just say, give us an update, or even if, you know, we reach out to them. So I think it would kind of be on, on, you know, the town side of things to look into that.
I, I don't know if I can agree with you on that one Jade, I think, I, I think once the board takes action, it's up, it should be up to. Code compliance to go there and say, you know, I, I think someone needs to alert code compliance that there's a, there was a requirement or a, a condition. And that code compliance thing goes up and says, you're gonna meet this, you know, you haven't done it, and it, it, it's almost like part of his. Maybe it's like part of that, that big sheet that if there's conditions are put on there, and that means that, or subject things that they gotta do, then. Those items have to be checked off as part of the code, code enforcement's responsibilities, make sure that those are done, because if they're not done. The planning board doesn't have the ability to enforce that, it's the board of selectmen, so then it would be, the way I see it, code compliance officer's job, come back to. Karina or the board of selectmen and say, hey, the, the, the planning board put this requirement on, and it's not done. Um, we need to enforce it, that's the way I would see it.
That's why I was wondering if there was a list or anything.
Well, we don't even need, yeah, we, you know, it shouldn't be a list, when the land use permit goes out, or the permit. The code compliance person gets it and then puts it on, I, I would think this would be a great vehicle for it.
Yeah.
You can put it on there and say that there are other things that have to be done, and, yeah, that's, that person would have to check it off, and if not, they would. If it's not done, then the code compliance would go to, oh, the Karina or the board.
I, I agree. But can we do it on a separate, I mean, that's, that's their internal worksheet. Have our own thing, and if during the meeting, like when we're coming with that, it'd be like, we want to add. Oh, the, 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 um, whatever, stone behind the price dropper to the, to the client's check. Some of the, I'll ask you what else, some.
Right, so, so I've asked Jade, okay, been busy, but I've asked her to come up with a cheat sheet for me. Because at our last meeting that we had, we gave, um, permission for several. Things to happen, and we did not do any findings of fact, again, and it's required by law that we findings of fact, when we give. When we vote on stuff like that, and so I've asked Jade to look, what happens is I get, we all get, well, I know we're supposed to do it, but we don't remember it. If she could, if she could make me out some sort of a sheet that says, okay, checklist, uh, the application is complete. Yeah, were there any waivers on the application, did you write down what the waivers were? And then this, you know, ju- just a sheet, sheet like that that says, are there any conditions? And, and you write them down, and you can hand that back to Jade, or whoever's here, Karina, whoever, and they take that and they say. Here's, here's what they voted on, that way there, there's no, you know, and that paper can go to Sean or the code enforcement or whoever, and they can. They can do it that way, at least that way we don't forget.
But list the, being facts on that same sheet.
Right, what's the finding?
Basically, you could give that sheet to some guy down on the street, and he could build, he could, not them saying, should. I mean, it makes it easy to come up with the, the permit.
Right, right.
Cause the, the conditions are there, and the finding of.
The waivers, waivers, any waivers.
I like that.
And, 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 I, I don't know if we want to have every board member have it, because well, Mike writes something different, or we just want to assign it to somebody. To do it, I don't care, I've been up, things go on, trying to cut the meeting, keep this.
I think a single sheet of paper would be better, and I think we should vote, I think we should vote on what's on that piece of paper.
When it's approved.
When it's approved, right, right.
But then what's the follow-up, just like you asked me about Cedar Circle, I mean, are you gonna have it on the agenda that we get a status on anything on that list? Or, or?
Cedar Circle was because it was a violation.
I'm just using that.
Yeah, 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 to me, any violation of planning board's didn't update it, so, other than that, I don't think we need to.
But if, if Mike drove by three months now, and there's still no stone up there, you'd be a little surprised.
Well, that's what I'm saying, now that we, now that Mike brought it up, it should go to court, code enforcement, he goes and says, okay, who was the guy there? That's what they voted on, you better put this, and if you don't, then I'm gonna have to go to. The, the town manager and the board of selectmen, and they're gonna find you, you know, in violation of the, what, what the planning board said you had, you, you and the planning board agree. The planning board should get involved, because we don't have any authority to let any enforcement, that's what I said.
We just tell them what needs to be done, and then, then it goes to Sharon OJ.
But again, those things fall through the cracks.
They do.
And if, and if we left each mea- yeah, we left each meeting with a.
The sheet.
I'll do it, I mean.
It just says, you know, scanning item, or whatever.
Like, we love to, I can take care of it, you want, we get the stuff, I mean, I'll, I can put it together, you want.
I mean, for this meeting here, what are, what are outstanding things?
Well, I'm not saying every meeting, I, I, I'm saying as far as the.
Compliance.
Compliance issues, you know, like, when, when we do site plan and review, when we do, uh, subdivision, when we do, so get those, those, the regulatory things that we have to do. Every time we do something, I, I'm trying to run a meeting, I forget about it, and then we get off talking about. Post- through adjournment, and we're, we're gone, you know, so, if, if I had a piece of paper, I'd say, oh, wait a minute, we just. We missed those, uh, how about we come up with some of those findings of fact now, that we can write them down, if you want to do, that'd be great, because I'm busy running a meeting, that'd be great. I'll make a motion that Mike Iirochi.
What am I gonna do?
When we approved the Alpine Pizza, and he agreed to do the fence, the South Peak one that we.
Yes, yes, yeah.
If they weren't doing it, at some point, you'd expect Sean would notify you.
When then, when the, we were looking at the, the site plan and review checklist, and there were waivers on there. Those waivers would be written down on that list as well, that way there, you would know which ones were waived. And which, and you don't have to say the whole thing, you can just say line fourteen was waived, line fifteen was waived, you know, that way there. And then when you get to the end of it, if any that need, um. Findings of fact, you know, when you give an approval, we, we did, we did tailor, we did Alpine Pizza, we did. If we were over here, what else did we do? No, no findings of fact. So, I mean, it's, and we always, I, I just went home, just about a week later, I said, you know, we didn't do a damn finding of fact for none of that. It just gets to be this bewitching hour, and we're just like, it's all, that's why it's nice to have a checklist of things. And Jade, Jade said she'd help, so, awesome. Other than that, um, I don't have anything, does anyone else have anything?
Yeah.
Thank you, I think that was all. You know, it, it, it's nice to have a meeting, thank you Jade.
Yes, thank you Jade.
Welcome, good night, bye-bye.
Bye, take the rest of the day off.
It, it's nice to have a meeting where, truly where you don't have any apples, and mentally you get through some.
Yeah.
If you do this stuff after you have apples.
Then you're not really doing it.
So. No, we need to put these in the charger when we're doing the batteries.
Yeah, where would it charger?
Are you still on?
Just unplug them and leave them.
Got it.
Thank you, guys. You too.
Was that one of you? Steve, I don't know.
You can tell it.
I, I don't want to do.
What are you bringing next, son?
Maybe it will be fun.
It's not.
We'll be back there, yeah.
We've got a lot of sugar. When I get home, I gotta go. Oh, yeah. We're all being around history. Good, no, it's good, you know, probably thinking you're on. I don't want to know.
Alcohol burn flames.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't know, it'd be.
Yeah, fine, yeah.